Sure. Wise and loving Father, on behalf of those gathered here this morning, allow us to first thank you for all the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and for the measure of health you provide us all. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the fellowship you provide each county official, county staff members and your families and community members here with us today. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to do otherwise. And thank you for loving us even so. As we remember the 2,977 lives we lost 12 years ago tomorrow, including the sacrifice made by the brave 418 first responders that day that lost their lives, we thank you, Father, for the blessing of being born an American, but tomorrow truly remind us each of just how truly blessed we are to be born in a country as great as the United States. No greater proof than the response to such a tragedy than the young men and women from our communities have continued to sacrifice in the 12 years since, the 4,474 men and women we've lost in Iraq, 2,194 men and women we've lost in Afghanistan to date. By the loving Father, we ask you to watch over each and every one of us, these American souls, and to continue to provide each of our families strength and comfort. We ask you to watch over our families, our friends and the community as you have always had and will continue to do so. We ask that you watch over all the men and women that continue the defense of our freedoms around the world every day, and the scriptures you have said and called for citizens to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. As was written in our Florida Constitution preamble, we, the people of the state of Florida, are being grateful to Almighty God for our constitutional liberty. And therefore, we pray for our commission, the stewardship of our commissioners and for the various levels of county staff and officials, including Ms. Lane, that she may get better and be back with us soon here working for the county, and for this assembled gathering here today in our commission hall, including all the members of the community who have taken up their time and busy schedule to participate in this wailing by the wall of civic involvement. And so, we ask that you graciously grant them each wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs for our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, even where there is honest disagreement, personal peace in each of our lives, and joy and fulfillment in our task of carrying out the daily business of this beautiful county we all call home. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and are around for our beloved Gulf County. For us in the most blessed nation, we pray amen.
(inaudible)
Correct, the corrected minutes if you'd like us to turn it.
Good morning.
My name is Mike Dombrowski. Thank you for having me here again today. As I presented to you all about two weeks ago, I'm sorry, about a month ago, we had received a grant, a partial grant, from the Department of Environmental Protection to look at the erosion on the southern end of Saint Joe Peninsula. And what you have in front of us right now, in front of you right now, is that scope of work that is cost shared by the state of Florida. Basically, I'm here for any questions that you have and address any issues.
Have any questions from the board?
Just, Michael, I mean, you've studied it since 95, so you got a pretty knowledgeable about the erosion there. See, how long has this study taken place?
The study, believe that the schedule that we have is between six and nine months, probably more on the nine-month side.
Okay. As you know, and I've talked to you a little bit about this and talked with Jennifer, establishing, gonna establish a committee to continue figuring out how we take care of the maintenance of the project that we did seven, eight years ago. Fortunately, it's performed pretty well. You must have did a good job designing it.
Thank you.
And, but at any rate, we'd love for you, when you can, to participate in those. If travel hinders, we can do conference call or whatever, so.
Yes, we have talked about that, and we certainly are more than willing to be involved as much as possible.
Anything else from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, have you thought any more? I'm sure you have, hopefully you have, on the locally sand, using maybe local sand that we have instead of dredging?
Yes, sir, we are gonna look at all options to see what is the most cost effective, but using local upland sand is certainly is an option.
Good.
Questions from the board?
Do you need a motion for this supplemental agreement?
Yes, I need, Mr. Butler.
I sent a consent. Inadvertently, we intended to go in, the agenda, but it wound up in a consent.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next is Kathy Fisher.
I'm here representing the class-
Ms. Kathy, could you state your name today?
I'm Kathy Fisher. I'm here representing the class of 2014 of Weewahichka. At that time of year, we're trying to have fundraisers for Project Graduation, and we would like to see about utilizing the Dead Lakes Park to have a haunted nature trail. And we would have plenty of adult supervision, we would have the seniors that are graduating helping, we would not be using the campsite at all, we would be to the right side of that. We would like to use the restrooms, the shorter nature trail, and the pavilions.
Mr. Chairman, I've had several people talk to me about that. I think it's a worthy cause, and I'm in full support of that. If you need a motion to that-
Yeah, one question.
Motion by Mr. Yeager, second?
Question. All right. Ms. Fisher came to me, and I asked her to come before the board. I feel things of certain nature need approval, and then we all know who's on first base. But I have one question. Ms. Fisher and the attorney over here, Mike, say that, will this be for a profit? Towards, will you be collecting, what I'm saying by that, will you be collecting money for people to participate?
Yes.
In this?
But it will go towards nothing but-
All right. Well, there's one question about possible insurance.
It's Mr. Novak here. It's just comparable to what we did in Veterans Park with the triathlon and some of the other events.
Okay.
So, if Ms. Fisher's confirmed that the project graduation's a not-for-profit, and we'll just make sure we have the appropriate, you know, documentation in advance, acknowledgement and approval by the commission, insurance for the event, and whatever precautions we have to take, obviously working with law enforcement, if there's any traffic or anything else for that.
Good deal. That's great. That's all.
Ms. Fisher, I think that Project Graduation, it was started back in 84, 85, and I think that's been a blessing to Gulf County and all the surrounding counties who used the project graduation because it kept the kids out of lots of unnecessary trouble.
Yeah.
So, all my wishes go to you guys, and I hope you all can raise plenty of money for Project Graduation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. McLemore, got a second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mistake my part. Page 117 was Resolution for the Beach Project, the Southern Mineral Agreement was on page 137, by MRDSO, Southern Mineral Agreement, Saint Joe Peninsula Erosion Control. We do need a vote on that. But what Mike Dombrowski just spoke to, or it was in the consent agenda, or it was in the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. McLemore, got a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, Sharon Gaskin from North Florida Child Development.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Gaskin from North Florida Child Development. Thank you very much for having me here today. And it is in question of the future of the courthouse in Weewahichka. Just for the board, what are your plans as everybody is relocated? What are your immediate plans for the courthouse?
I think we've sent a letter, and I think we're planning on moving some of the ones-
Okay, those are all moved. Okay. All right, well, we've been residents or tenants of the board for two decades, and just in conversation, we would like to be able to continue that residence and keep our central location, simple central operations there. We oversee projects like the one in Port Saint Joe in five counties. We've been an economic impact to this county for two decades and built it from ground zero. So, what I'd like to talk to you about today is an option to either gift the facility if you are going to completely move out of it, board it up, close it up, and allow our corporation to have the opportunity to possibly continue its integrity, continue its accessibility to the public, have its historical value. It is our lighthouse, so to speak. It is one of the few landmarks that Weewahichka has. Having been the county seat, yes, it has a lot of eccentric value to us, but I assure you that if you would consider us as a steward of that property, that it would be well taken care of, and in a proposal of a reversionary clause, possibly, if you were to give this to the nonprofit, and we can write the terminology that it would revert back to you in the event that we don't use it for what we're doing it, and that's the continuation of building jobs and creating jobs for this county. I mean, if we leave it as it is now, we move out along with the others, it will deteriorate. It will continue to deteriorate, and it holds a lot of value for our community. And I would like to be the caretaker of it.
Yes, I'd like to comment on that. I don't think the intent was never for you to move out of that courthouse.
Well, I, well-
Yeah.
But I think the, you know, the condition that it is in has, the determination has been it's not, it's not a well building.
Chairman, are you proposing that the not-for-profit? And the reason that all this came up is because our taxpayers were, you know, footing the bill for it because we didn't generate enough revenue and those type of things, and we're just trying to do everything we can to cut the budget. Are you proposing that the not-for-profit will actually maintain the building too? Because one of our problems has always been that, you know, we had problems with the elevator, we had problems with maintaining.
I understand that there is some money to be spent on the facility, but if I lease it from you, or if I, you know, there would always be that go-between, you know, you would still be liable for it, but if it's to a nonprofit organization that can develop, you know, I can't make any promises right now, but I just hate for it to be closed and be in, you know. But yes, my proposal is for you, a donation to a nonprofit who would continue its integrity, and it would be available to the public to view the historical part that you have restored and relieve you of all liability of it.
This is, gentlemen, this is something that I'm gonna have to think about. I mean, this has blindsided me. I didn't know the intentions, you know, your intentions or whatever on that. Before I give away any county property, any county property, I will have to think it through thoroughly.
Okay. Well, and I would suggest some type of a written proposal for review. I also am very concerned about essentially eating away property. And I would suggest a written proposal regarding a lease as well, if you're interested in using the property.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a proposal for you at this time. I just, if the intent was to close it and never use it anymore, and it would go into disarray, I don't want to see that happen.
And I can understand that, but I think it's something that needs to be reviewed in detail, whether it be a long-term lease or any type of conveyance of property would need to be-
Right, I understand. Well, you know, the thing that would keep you tied to it would be a long-term lease, because I need to know that I can keep my central operations, oh, I'd like to be able to keep them in this county. You know, I have other counties I can actually move, and we have. We've moved from an operating budget of $400,000 to over $4 million. We just generated, we just built a 17,800-square-foot facility in this community, which I completed. Seventy percent of what I do is in this county. I'm under the impression that, you know, I need your support to help me economically continue to operate in this county. So, you know, I can show you all those statistics. We've kept it alive, actually. I think the data is there that shows that what money we did pay for lease did pay for the electric bill and the water bill and the insurance.
And I appreciate your passion and your desire to remain in Gulf County, but there is just a tremendous amount of details that would go into even considering something like this before we even got into any type of a written agreement. But I believe that, I personally, as Commissioner McLemore has stated, I had no idea, I only knew that you were appearing before the board, I had no idea why.
You know, just, I agree. I think it takes time to work these details out. In theory, I'm in support of this move because, number one, we had tried to look at a not-for-profit before to take over the operation of that. I am concerned that City of Weewahichka and Gulf County from time to time have meetings in that, want to make sure that we can still keep that open for the public.
And that would be, that would be the condition, I'm aware of the conditions of the facility, and under the agreement or under the gift or the lease, I would make that available.
Yes, but, but, that's another thing on the north end of the county that the county's losing, Ms. Gaskin.
You're gonna, you're gonna close it up and die.
It's gonna be very hard for me to sit down and support losing anything else from the north end of the county.
I don't think we're proposing losing it. I think, I think what we're proposing to do is having a lease with terms in that thing for the county or the City of Weewahichka to still use it.
Okay, that's different, yes.
Well, those are two, I gave you two options. If you want out of it completely, and that's what you're saying, is eating up your pocketbooks, draining your budget, I'll take it on to save it, Carmely. I will take it on to save it.
Okay.
And my foundation, my corporation will do that. I will keep it alive and vibrant and whatever, okay? So, as a last resort, I can do that. I've done more other harebrained ideas that worked out, just what I hear, just Mr. Mayor.
I understand. Actually, Ms. Gaskin, while you're here, I want to commune you on what you have done for Gulf County. I know the employees that you have employed in Gulf County. I know what you've done for Gulf County.
Well, thank you.
But this is a critical, critical issue for me, so this is something that counties don't have to sit down and look at all corners of this before I make a move.
Well, I'd be glad to give you- Ms. Gaskin, I would suggest, if you already have a written proposal, that's fine, but if not, I would just suggest some type of a summary with just bullet points of what you would propose.
Well, I couldn't go anywhere-
It has to be, or formal.
I couldn't go anywhere until I knew what your plan was for it.
So, Ms. Gaskin, you asked the county to, that you use the property, turn the property over to you, and if anything ever happened to your facility, you don't get the property back to town?
It's a reversionary kind of-
And you're gonna maintain the property way?
Yes.
Don't have no problem with that.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
On order.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Gaskin, thank you for coming, and, man, that you and I have known each other for two years, I've never seen you take on a project that you didn't improve it. I think you will take what we have up there and improve it. Now, you plainly stated there that it would revert back to the county, and you were gonna leave the county. It's gonna take a lot of tax dollars. We, you know, fact business this afternoon, we have a budget meeting, and, ooh, we're, money's tight. It's tight everywhere, and you seem like, to me, you're giving us a good opportunity here, and I agree with the other commissioners looking into it, especially with the attorney here, but if we can, with the taxpayers a little relief on what we have to put into this building every year and still have the purse strings to it, whether if you want, I know you're making improvements to it, I know that, I know you, and you're gonna fix it up nice, but you can do things that probably we can't do with it because of the money crunch we're in right now. But anyway, I want to thank you for coming here, and I know you'll do the right thing and you did state in that.
Ms. Gaskin-
It's a historical building, she knows that.
If you get with Mr. Butler and get with their attorney, I'll put something together and bring it back before the board. And what you, from what I'm understanding what you're asking of, I don't really see a big problem with it.
But it's a county building, gentlemen.
Yes. It's a county building.
And if you want to stipulate that you'd rather have a lease than outright gift, then let's relay that on to the attorney.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, a month and a half ago, the commission, obviously in the budget discussions, have moved constitutional offers out, and the funding now is going to go away. The letter went out to Ms. Gaskin, North Florida Child Development, from the county at your direction, notifying her that there's gonna be a restructure. A year, this is an eighteen-month-old process that North Florida and the county has been engaged in, evaluating the square footage, looking at the condition of the property, looking at the current lease terms, to the point where we provided a lease over a year and a half ago, and the commission wanted to keep the status quo at the time. The things that have changed now is that Ms. Becky and Ms. Shirley's staff are not in that facility, and the only people in there now is the not-for-profit North Florida Child Development. On October 1, the funding is gone. The administration has identified several areas in that facility that need immediate attention, immediate attention, and there's no longer county staff there, so there's a question of funding. And once the letter went out, I believe, Ms. Gaskin, I appreciate you coming today, she had reached out to Mr. Butler and myself and asked for a bunch of information with regards to costs for the facility, insurance, utilities, numerous work orders, trying to get a real handle on what it costs a county dollar for dollar to operate that facility on an annual basis. We gave her as much information as we could, but as we approached and moved down the calendar, she requested to have a meeting, at which time, Don, and I suggested that she come before the commission, at least introduce their thoughts and their ideas as they go forward. There's a financial component to it, which is what is the fair market value for the square footage in that courthouse? I think they have over 2,200 square feet right now, they're about a dollar a square foot, and they're generating over $2,000, $2,300 a month on that facility. If they go forward and they continue to lease that long-term or whatever you all agree to in terms of terms, the other issue of remediation in that building, the power issue, some of the motor issue, the basement issue, some of the motor issues, there's issues in that facility that need to be addressed immediately that Mr. Butler and I were discussing with Sharon and her staff. That funding has to be addressed. So, if she had, if you have proposals, I would recommend that you give them to the county, but when we get back together on the 24th, again, they have occupied the facility, there's remediation things that go on in that facility, and if it's a long-term lease that you all choose, then there's gonna probably be a relocation considered by this commission, and then address the issues in the facility and move her staff around, because what I believe they currently occupy is where some of the work's gonna need to be, need to happen. The only thing Sharon had mentioned was, if the county doesn't have it, she proposed to Mr. Butler and I, which we told him to propose to you all, is to take that on, create some kind of agreement, whether it be an escrow, whether they prove they have the funding in a nonprofit, they would begin immediately just do the remediation work with reversionary clauses. So, if she comes with proposals for you all, I'd recommend that you all consider those over the next thirteen days, and then if we can continue those discussions amongst the commission with the staff, so we can give them some direction. They're the only tenants in that facility at this time.
Mr. Novak, all that information that you just spoke about regarding the cost of maintaining this building, I would like you or Mr. Butler, whoever has the opportunity and the access to that information, I'd like to see what the cost has been to operate that building for the past five years. I think the other members of the board would probably like to see that as well. And I would like to just state that there is a tremendous amount of space between needing to improve or remediate issues at a building and transferring title to county property, a county courthouse, to an outside entity. And I have, I have huge concerns about that. That is absolutely not something that I would ever say that I was behind in five minutes of it being presented to me at the board, and I think this board needs to think long and hard about that.
And I'm open. Just give me some time, let me look at it.
Well, Ms. Gaskin, if you can get that information to, and get with them, and they get back with us.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you have any comment? We haven't anything, that's what we're sharing. We've got no money on the budget starting first on October for a power bill utility bill, so we'll have to notify the head coach to go out. We'll have a, Sharon, it was that last week, that she'll be in the, so we're gonna discontinue making power payments. What we use through September, that'll be it, and then we're probably not paying in October.
And what is the power payment, just out of curiosity? You don't have to have the exact number.
I think, I think, well, ballpark number is 1,500, 1,800, $2,000 a month.
Right, Ms. Day.
Can I say something?
Hold up one minute. Come on back to the podium, Ms. Gaskin.
I don't have my numbers with me, but that was, that was, that was an average that I got when the building was fully operating, with everybody there. Roy Lee's staff was there, so I haven't checked it in the last six months, but that was the high end. And those units have not worked. The elevator has not worked ninety percent of the time that we've been there. So, you know, we've pretty much been the go-between, a lot of things for the access on that. So, I just want you all to know that we have looked at the real cost of operating it, so whatever we need to do to-
If you can get those back to Mr. Butler and the attorney, we'll go with it from there.
Mr. Chairman, at Republic Speaker-at-Large, Mr. Brad Bailey.
Mr. Chairman's Board? Yes. Brad Bailey. Name the address, name the address. Brad Bailey, 3844 Highway 22, Weewahichka. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I had today to address last meeting, there was a, on the America's Ditch Project, there were several false statements and lies told about me and my company on that project. Here today, just to kind of set the record straight. First thing is, Mr. Cran stepped before the board, basically saying that I had incorrectly graded the project and had said inlets wrong and so forth. Just to make it known, these lines, these inlets, were all set to county plans and county specs. They was checked by the engineer, all of it was done correctly. Also, right after we finished this project, the city of Port Saint Joe, I believe, come in and done a major sewer project, took and tore all the ditch line back up, installing a six- or eight-inch force lane down through there, all their ladder runs to all their houses. So, my point being, the ditch lines would have changed then, because they wouldn't have put them back, the one thing, they didn't have the county plans put them back. So, it's a lot of blame on me on that, it's totally false. Mine was correct, and I'm gonna stick by that decision, and that's the-
Ms. Chairman, I had today to address last meeting, um, there was a, on the America's Ditch project, there were several false statements and lies told about me and my company on that project. Here today, just to kinda set the record straight. Uh, first thing is, is, uh, Mr. Cran stepped before the board, basically saying that I had incorrectly graded the project and had said inlets wrong and so forth. Just to make it known, these lines, these inlets, were all set to county plans and county specs. They was checked by the engineer, all of it was done correctly. Also, right after we finished this project, the city of Port San Diego, I believe, come in and done a major sewer project, took and tore all the ditch line back up, installing a six or eight-inch force lane down through there, all their ladder runs to all their houses. So, the- my point being, the ditch lines would've changed then, 'cause they wouldn't have put them back. The one thing, they didn't have the county plans put them back. So it's a lot of blame on me on that, it's totally false. Mine was correct, and I'm gonna stick by that decision, and that- that's the first little statement I'd like to make. Well, secondly, uh, Commissioner Brown made several- several, uh, statements in the same meeting, that was totally false and lies toward me. Number one, she says I performed work, I performed work for the county without workers' comp insurance. Totally a false statement. I have my workers' comp insurance, right here, I also called the county, they had it in the file. So, my, I provided it, it was there, it was in the file, so, where she came up with that statement, I have no idea. Secondly, county was at a risk, 'cause I didn't know how I worked my comp. Well, there again, I just proved to you, I have it, and she'll go toward the, uh, the county yourself and go root, and you'll see that I send that, okay? So, me putting my county at risk is another false statement. I totally worked workers' comp from the day I was in my company to the day I ended my company. Always had a workers' comp. Uh, on that same statement, she said that basically my company committed a felony because I did not have workers' comp insurance. Well, there again, I proved to you I had workers' comp insurance. I did not commit a felony, my company did not commit a felony. Uh, number three, my bid bond was incorrect. Here's my bid bond, it's addressed to board, we and Sharon and the board, it came in, this is my copy of it. Basically says here that my bid bond up to five percent is geared up to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, total aggregate, okay, that's five percent of that when you turn them in. Here's the addendum, that was signed to it, that everything is legit, that it was turned in. So my bid bond is correct, I had a bid bond. But, after doing some research, uh, on ten nine of oh seven, I believe the board had actually waived the bid bond requirement. If you look back in a minute, you'll see, okay? So, should I prove, uh, had it, according to the board now? Did I send it in? Yes, I did, I have my bid bond in there, and it is correct, I have my statements. Uh, trying to catch up what I said here. Uh, okay, it says, uh, back- back on workers' comp, I skipped myself here, I'm sorry. Uh, if this bond would've stopped by my job site during this time, we could've addressed this issue then, not six years after the project's going on, guys, this is- this is an old project. Why's it being come up now? I don't know, why do I have to go off work, come to, uh, address my status here? I just don't, it's six years old. Second, if she would've come down, she would've noticed that the corner of Selma and America's Avenue, I had a bit, uh, job site board, had my company's information on it, my general liability information on it, and my workers' comp information on it. Right on the corner of Selma and America's Avenue, that's where the big drainage goes across the road there, on America's Avenue, she would've saw this in. Uh, then she stated that it took an additional hundred and fifty days for me to complete this project, an additional hundred and fifty days. Now, we had a hundred and twelve days to complete, then we had a hundred and fifty, but we're over, is what she said. Well, the notice to award was signed on January second, we finished this thing sometime mid-Septemberish, okay, which would've been a hundred and ninety-four days total project. Now, here's how you work this. From the day you start this project, the day you finish it. If it rains and I can't work, guess what? I get that day per- per day for rain, okay? Also, if it rains, and it rains for two or three days, then it might be two or three days extra, but I still can't work on this project. So you get with the county engineer, and you get with the county staff, they approve these days. So these- these days add on to your- to your, uh, a lot of time, understand? So we're going with this. You have to calculate all these days. So let's start with more of the, uh, of what went on. In this whole project, it was a long drawn-out deal, we had gas lines we had to deal with, had phone cables, major phone cables, had cable lines. The gas team had no idea where their gas lines are. So sometimes we'd have to wait for days for them to even come locate it for us, okay? So that, there again, that's four days you have to add on to the project. Uh, trying to catch up one minute. All these days that I'm talking about, again, have been approved by the county staff and the county engineer, okay? So, to state that I should've been charged thirty thousand dollars over because I went over and liquidated them, totally false, totally false. She, uh, let's see here, just- just some pro- some- some facts about this project, okay? When I build this project, later on, not by the first pipe, can had already bought the pipe, six to eight months prior to the project starting, stored, it's stored at Beacon Hill Park, okay? February fourth, two thousand eight, remember Alpha and I at Beacon Hill Park? Pipe caught on fire. So, next day, I arrive, we go out there, we, my staff and the county staff get together and start doing that pipe inventory. So we not do- we're not working on the project now, now we're trying to do stuff for the county, trying to figure out what burnt up, okay? So we do that, there again, that's more days, okay? Also, guys, what you don't realize is this right here, when the board met, and only one of you was on the board at the time, when the board met at that time, they said for us to use the pipe that was already there, okay? Fifty percent, sixty percent of the pipe that was left was burnt and warped, okay? They're twenty-foot long, so the end of it is burnt and warped, so the county said, okay, we'll just cut them off here, we'll buy a coupler, which goes around the pipe, zip ties together, a coupler, to use whilst they're keeping them hydrated more. This costs more time for me, okay? So, with that being said, I would not charge the county one dime for that. You will not see a change order in none of that file where I charged the county for my time to put them couplers together. While they either just take out a pipe and slip it together, and while they're coupling it together, but again, the- the board and the county staff and county engineer approved this project for us to use that, and that's what we did. So some of these pipes were warped, so they're on behalf, but we corrected that. Uh, and then also at one time, we had to wait on more pipe to be delivered, 'cause we'd already used up all the pipe. So my point is, uh, when you're calculating total days on project, you have to take all of this in consideration, okay? These days are added on to your project, these are extra workdays you get to work during this day, okay? So, you need to know the facts before you start talking, okay? And in closing, I- in closing, I would like to say that, basically, the county engineer, the county staff, my staff, we done everything for the plans, for design. The pipe company engineer come out, we met with him on the side of the road before this project even started, he even approved it. That's the person who makes the pipe, their pipe, so. And in the end, so, in my closing statement, Chairman, I would like to say that I have contacted my attorney to file defamation of character lawsuit against the county, thank you.
Mr. Bailey, uh, thank you for coming and clearing some of these matters.
I have questions, um-
Do you have to go to attorney?
Yeah, I just- If, uh, Mr. Bailey's indicated he's spoken with an attorney, I- I would just, and as I've cautioned you in the past, if there's a notice like that from someone at the podium, uh, with regards to something of that nature, I just, if you wanna respond to comments, I wouldn't- I wouldn't respond anything to the- to the actual facts or- or the statements made. I would- I would ask Mr. Bailey afterward, provide a notice of his counsel's name, I can reach out to him, but if you feel compelled to say something, but nothing specifically of that nature, I wouldn't, I just don't think it's appropriate.
Kevin, thank you for my board.
Yes, um, and I do wanna clarify some of the issues here. And one, that first issue being the workers' comp. The issue with the workers' comp, first of all, let me state that I requested a detailed amount of information from our county administrator, and he provided that information. The information that I used was taken directly from documents that are public record, that anyone in here can get copies of. The workers' comp should've been in place at the time of bid, and it should've been in place prior to the signing of the contract. Now, I have a printout from the Florida Division of Workers' Compensation. This printout states that the workers' comp was in effect on January twentieth of two thousand and eight. Uh, the bid date was October nineteenth of two thousand and seven. The contract date was October twenty-third of two thousand and seven, and the notice to proceed was January second of two thousand and eight. Again, the workers' comp was in place January twentieth of two thousand and eight. And the notice to proceed said the work had to begin within ten days, which would be January twelfth. The workers' comp printout from the state's website states that there was a lapse in coverage for Mr. Bailey's company from May of two thousand and seven to January twentieth of two thousand and eight, so no workers' comp coverage. And as a side issue, his code, they- they code your workers' comp because you pay according to, uh, the risk of the type of work that you're doing, and the code for his workers' comp was a painting code, not underground installation. Now, when I questioned this information, and- and I can go through all of these issues, but I don't wanna make everyone sit here and listen to me address every one of these issues. But it is my job to look at the way that this county is doing the county's business, and that includes contracts, and that includes contracts from the past. And I have said nothing about Mr. Bailey's company, what I am talking about is the way that this county does business. And I cannot sit here and turn a blind eye to improper conduct in business. The money that we spend, every dime of the money that we spend came out of the taxpayer's pocket. Now, it is a felony to work without workers' comp. And- and I'm still looking into this, the issues with, uh, America's Ditch. We have a payment that is requested prior to work being done, we had our first payment request the same date as the notice to proceed. Oh, if I have it right here, let me see. Application and certification for payment was applied for for thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars on the same day as the notice to proceed, January second, two thousand and eight. No workers' comp, no work should've been done at that time, because that is the date of the notice to proceed. That includes a ten percent retainage, so the amount paid was twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Now, the only thing I can rely on is the information that Mr. Butler provides to me. As the county administrator, it is his job to provide me information, and I rely on him for that. So, Mr. Butler, do you have any comments about Mr. Bailey's, um, comments to the information that you've provided me, and-
I can't answer this.
... provided you all the information and asked you if there was any discrepancies?
I can't answer this, I gave you everything you asked for.
So, in- in the information that I presented to the public, was it in conflict with the information that you presented me?
I gave you everything you asked for, I think you were, large part of the discussion in the House board meeting was about workers' comp, which you didn't ask for. So, I'm not sure what your question was, other than I gave you, I gave you everything you asked for.
Well, I did ask for all the workers' comp and the insurance coverage, that is absolutely not true. And let- let me ask you a question, do you think as the county administrator that when I am looking into an issue that it is your position to hold information back? If I'm looking at a project, do you think that you should provide me with all the information you have? Do you work for me?
Uh, that's inappropriate question. You sent to me at six twenty-two on Sunday night, July twenty-eighth email, and this email is pretty specific. In this email, you- you asked for certain things. It took Denise, she's here, Denise, it took her most of three days to fulfill this- this request. This information not seen anywhere in one location. Some of this is in the clerk's office, some is in my office, some is in corporate works, some is in the mayor's office. This one, one simple request here took most of three days to fulfill, and I gave you everything you asked for. So, and there's, now that you're coming about, uh, do I think it's appropriate for me to withhold information? I'm not going to withhold anything from you, I've given you, uh, every chemistry for the last twenty-five years, everything you asked for. If it can't be gotten, unless you know it cannot be gotten, I've given you everything you asked for.
And here's- here's how it works, I get exactly what I asked for, I get nothing additional. You don't share the knowledge that you have, the historical knowledge, it is your job to inform me about these projects when I'm asking you for information. And, when I spoke about it at the last meeting, it is your job to correct if there's something that's incorrect, you are the county administrator, you need to speak up. But I'm trying to-
I would be talking all the time.
You have a workers' comp certificate when the- when the- when the state is saying he had no workers' comp. And I would like to see Mr. Bailey's workers' comp certificate.
I would be speaking all the time if I spoke of whatever kind of something you said wrong on the board, all the time. And you and I talked about this, when people come from this board and speak, and they talk about the county commission, and you realize a three-hundred-dollar a night, okay, rings, you know what's wrong, I know what's wrong, and you said, you told me, those things need to be corrected at one time. A week ago, you were saying some things wrong, did you, you did, I- I asked you to eliminate it, was you asked for workers' comp? You said, yes, I did. And- and I go back to the video and I listen to it, and I- I hear my question, I hear your answer, which is, you gave me the wrong answer, but you did that short, I gave you everything you asked for, and for instance, any other relevant information of which I may have neglected to request.
In other words, Don, and this is the game that we have to play-
Any all potential problems-
I wanna finish here, you cut-
Any all potential problems related to this project. I mean, how, there's no end to it, I tied, warranty gets in the ditch, swells up, busts apart, clears everybody, there's no end to it, there's no way I can ever answer these questions correctly. What I gave you was maybe one percent what you asked for, these- these, I call them wild questions, there's no- there's no way they can be answered, any- any other things, potential problem that could go along with that ditch, they could be an end of them.
Mr. Butler, regarding workers' comp coverage, I asked for insurance coverage, I'd like to see the insurance coverage, however, it's a moot point, because I have the information from the state that there was no workers' comp coverage. But, this is an issue, and I wanna state here for the record, that I expect the county administrator and the county attorney to provide me with information without me having to call every day and say, is there anything new going on, is there anything that I need to know about, or is there anything that's going to be brought up at the meeting that is not on the agenda? I would just wanna let you know now, and I know I've asked you many times to let me know, I've sent you emails to ask you to let me know, anything you know that's going to be discussed at the meeting that is not on the agenda, and I just want to renew that. That's a side issue from this workers' comp, but I would like to renew that. And anytime that I'm speaking at a meeting and I say something that you think is correct, I encourage you to say, Ms. O'Brien, I believe it's incorrect, let me help you out, let me correct you.
We started way before the meeting, last meeting, but the question you posed to me, what did the equipment cost, and what did the main power cost for the next ditch repaired after the project was completed? That is a skewed number, that is- that is, I'm not to tell you the truth. Um, the many of the- The money is a fair rate to turn, you got an envelope sitting out there, eight dollars a day, sometime longer than used, and we propheasine the rate on that. That, rather skewing the numbers, that thirty-seven pound dollars, Grant said two and fifty-pound dollars, and when you say thirty-seven thousand dollars, both the numbers are incorrect. The number that incorrect the cost, you asked for, what did equipment cost, what did the manpower cost? I think it cost thirty-seven thousand dollars. It has not. And so, if I corrected, if I corrected every time, just said something wrong, I'd be talking all the time.
Oh, that's good to know. That is a nice comment there, Mr. Butler.
It's okay. I mean, you're telling me, this is going off on its hands.
We got to talk one at a time.
It's going off on its hands, and you're telling me that I should do the everything as well. You know, my standard actually pretty much to you when you call, anything going on that you don't, that's going on, I know about. And I pretty much tell you, one thousand times going on. There's no way, there's no way for a commissioner to call me, it's at random, say, can you tell me what's going on? You would have to, there's not a day that I don't talk to other commissioners, which today we're almost coming in every day. Most time it's about budget, or most, most time about consortium issue or something. Most days, time comes in, most days, we'll come in or, or call, and we call them calls every day, comes in every night. But this is just, the brilliance that we're going through, we can't talk about in two or three minutes, and you know, other things, no way in the world can you determine everything by calling me on the phone and knowing what details are. It takes thirty minutes, sometimes an hour or two hours to go through the details. And so, your conversation is much better. And I think you're asking that, you asked me, and I'm not giving you what you asked for. I gave you one hundred percent of what you asked for.
Now, when, when Mr. Bailey comes up and presents issues, my point is, I'm relying on the information that you have provided me.
I gave you everything you asked for.
I'd be happy to go through all of Mr. Bailey's issues. But I do want to clarify something. I can't answer for what Mr. Corran says. He is a constituent in the community. I have no control over him. I, I don't know what he's going to say when he comes to the podium, and I can't answer for him. I can only answer...
If you tell you, if you tell you last board meeting, I'm going to back up a few weeks. He can answer the board. First he came, back about five weeks ago, he came in and he had, he had a request. He didn't give to the clerk. He came over and he laid it down here. And for that rest of the year, I immediately took it and put it here. For the camera's benefit, just as soon as he moved it over here, I did this, I gave it to the clerk. It was for, for all practical purposes and private workers' costs that he was making, or apparently didn't pay for. He needed, needed to take time, or canister to take time, and it was relentless. You then, you sent this to me, this was the F P S you asked for, it's trying from Corran asked for. Then, to each other...
It's not the same thing.
You asked for the same information, you might, you've asked more, but what he asked for...
That's right.
...is in your list. And you asked more.
He asked questions, and in order for me to be able to address his questions, I needed to look into this project. And I...
And then he came, he came to the board, he came to the board, and he was making a comment about, he made a comment last board meeting that, Don Butler would not give me answers. When he came from, I don't know, but he made a comment to you, because I understand, you haven't received most of the answers. Because I missed the video, he's told you, and you didn't correct him. You didn't correct him.
I corrected him. I told him you were working on it. I was working on it.
You heard, you heard information that he needed three weeks before he got me. I did just three weeks before he got me, and, and you didn't correct him, but you tell you, I understand that you haven't received most answers.
Mr. Butler, I did tell him that you were working on it and I was working on it. As soon as he mentioned that you were not doing it, I corrected him and said that you were. But that is not the point here. I just want to make it clear...
Oh, yeah, it's not my fault.
I want any information that is pertinent to the issues particularly, that are going on in District Three. And you and I sat down a couple of weeks ago in your office, and we had a discussion. And in that discussion, I explained to you how I felt about getting information from you and prior to the meeting. We had that meeting at about four o'clock-ish, I'll just say. Not definitely, but roughly about four. We sat for hour, two hours, and discussed all of this. And I thought we communicated pretty well, just about communicating. And then I find out a couple of days later that you had met with Mr. Hammond with Fish and Wildlife and had had this meeting in your office to tell them they had to get their stuff off of the county property. You didn't mention that to me in this meeting, and it had...
Yeah, it came out the other way, it happened later.
See, I can't, the letter went out, you did not meet with them before I was in your office.
This is three-year ordeal dealing with Fish and Wildlife.
I understand it. Talking about communication...
Hold up for one minute. Hold that ordeal right there with the boats being moved off the property. This is something that took place upon the Mr. Williams. It was a letter put out, I sent the letter myself.
I'm not talking about the issue of the boats. I'm talking about the communication, that you didn't inform me that this went on. I would like to know what's going on. This happened hours before I...
There's a thousand other things to be done, like a pound of water.
Not a pound of water.
A pound of water.
Hold up for a minute. I, I want to, this is something that we need to really discuss because going to some of these conferences that we go to with Mr. McDaniels, we have seen commissioners that have their own attorney, their own staff, they have everything. We got five commissioners here that Mr. Butler have to tend to. We have five commissioners that must, that our attorney have to tend to. So, now you got five different things going on that one man got to tend to. I mean, I walk in his office and I might talk about one situation, and he have all the paperwork out on the desk to talk to me about the situation. You know, Mr. McDaniels might walk in the office, he got to take everything off the table, start all over again. So, this is something that, you know, we got one administrator. We don't, we're not like those big counties that have a whole staff for one commissioner. We don't have a whole staff. So, now, we got to work with each other as best as we can because there's only one administrator, there's only one attorney. And in the administration office, I mean, the workers in there is a skeleton crew. And when we, to me, when we go and pull stuff out of the hat that's six years old, ten years old, fifteen years old, it's slowing down the process of the work that need to be did today. So, that's just, that's my opinion on what's going on right now. I mean, do we have anything else from anybody else for the board?
Yes, yes, I'd like to give my opinion, please.
Yes.
And this is, Ms. O'Brien and your pack group. If you own the America's Ditch, if, if you want to investigate the America's Ditch, which is a project that's six years old, we have an email right here from Mr. Butler with eleven questions on it. This is recently. This will tie him and his staff up completely. But my suggestion to you and your pack...
I don't have a pack.
Yes, ma'am, you do. If, if y'all have an issue with the America's Ditch, go to the state attorney's office and file a complaint. Let them do this work. Mr. Butler don't have time to do it, and he's not going to do it. If I have to get three boats on this board, he'll not to do it.
Um, Mr. McLemore, I'm not conducting a criminal investigation. I'm trying to understand an issue regarding a project in my district. And as we talked about when we sat in your office and talked about communication...
We got a nice communication, and we talked about, do we know something...
Let me finish, Mr. Butler. Now, you cut me off. When we talked about it, I told you at that time, if I make a request of you and it seems overreaching or that I'm asking for a lot of information, I ask you to pick up the phone and talk to me about that request, and we can talk through it. Because my request, the way I meant it, may not be the way that you take it. So, I said, anytime you receive a request from me that you feel will take a tremendous amount of time, and again, I've talked to the clerk's office about this, I, I think that I've made myself clear with them, that if I ask for something that would take a lot of time, to let me know, and we can revise the way it's requested, and, and they've done that. They've told me when I ask for something. And I've asked you to do the same thing. It's called communication. I've asked you to pick up the phone. So, the item that you were discussing just a few minutes ago, you could have picked up the phone and said to me, this is difficult.
Which item was that?
The one that you were talking about when I was asking for something, you were talking about a specific item. I'm not talking about specifics here, but you mentioned a specific item.
I understand, you and I talked about...
Yes, a specific item in that email. But my point is, let's not get caught up in the specific item. Let's talk about the, the overall picture here. My point is, if I ask for something that is difficult for you to produce, you need to call me. And I told you, I have several phone numbers. Call me, I'll come in, or I do come in, I come by, I come by the county building, I will come and sit with you, I will come and meet with you at any time. I've told you that repeatedly. So, if you have a question about something I've asked for, or you have an issue with it, or you think it's too much, call me. And we will work through where I get the amount of information I want, and it's not difficult. I do not, I said this before, and I will say it again, I do not want to be onerous on the staff. But I do want to finish going through Mr. Bailey's issues.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Yes, sir.
The conversation that we had two weeks ago when you came in after your last board meeting, Mr. O'Brien was upset, I sent all the county commissioners, copied all the county commissioners, all my reply to her on the email.
Wow.
Yes, ma'am. And Miss Lanier, we sent more women to challenge Ms. Lanier on what she was saying to... And what we just said, we pretty much quoted, well, I tell you in that same email, I tell you, before we move forward with this, we need to talk. And I appreciate you using my words back on me because that's what I tell you, you can't change history, it's the right, what was said. But, but my challenge to you, my question to you was, Mr., and you, and you say, I can't, I can't believe you're so thin-skinned. After all this time, you're so thin-skinned. I guess, ma'am, you found the thin-skinned part of me. But when you put two untrue statements about me, you know, your first sentence ain't true, your last sentence ain't all you know, I'm sure without me, yes, ma'am, I'm thin-skinned. When people tell things wrong about me, I'm thin-skinned. That's out of conversation. It was not a good conversation.
Well, first of all, I was not upset that you copied the commissioners on your response. What I was bothered by was the fact that both you and Ms. Lanier, on different issues, reached out to the other commissioners without calling me and discussing it with me first.
We did not, I sent an email to her, and everyone got the same email, and that was the only reach out I was to. So, I always try to stop on sparring and making players and make it look this way, to make, to make the ditch out of this pond out here between here and the low road near this, look like a lake inside Central Park. That's not what I'm into. I won't tell you exactly what it is. You asked me for certain things, I gave you certain things, and I'm not into spilling.
Well, this has gone well beyond the scope of this meeting. The point is, I would like to communicate, but I would like to address the rest of Mr. Bailey's issues. I'll just go through them quickly. The county was at risk if a, if a contract operates without workers' comp because you essentially insure the workers with absolute unlimited liability. The bid bond was due at the time of the bid. Now, if the board had voted to waive the bid bond, that information was not provided to me by staff when I requested the information on the bid bond.
And where did you ask for?
So, again, I should not have to ask, was the bid bond waived?
Maybe ask for a copy of the bid bond, we'll have it to you.
If I asked for the bid bond, I want the information on the bid bond. Okay. I could not stop by the job site. I was not a county commissioner at that time, and it was not my business to stop by the job site when the ditch was being installed. As far as the gas lines, phone lines, cable lines, that's at all jobs. Our county folks here, our, our public works people go out and repair roads and work on the ditches all the time. They have to get all of the lines marked. Anytime you work in the ground, you are going to have gas lines, phone lines, cable lines, that should be factored into your days that you bid that it's going to take to complete the job. The bid was for labor only. The issue with the pipes, I, I do recall as a constituent, that the pipes burned. Again, if there was extensions allowed for the timing in the contract, it should have been written into the, into the contract. It should have been put in writing and should have been in the, in the public record. Now, again, I have questions about the crimped pipe, about the pipes being tied together with caution tape. These are photographs that Commissioner McDaniel showed when he was first on this board. And I don't know what his investigation led to at that time, but I have a lot of people in District Three that call me and ask me about America's Ditch. And I have to know the answers. I can't just tell them, well, that happened before I was on the board, so I can't address it. Because I don't think that's the proper way to do my job. And my other question would be, how many ditches has Mr. Bailey's company installed prior to America's Ditch? What was his experience level in working underground other than septic tank installation?
I have anything else from the board on this? Okay, we're going to move on to county staff bidding. Could you come to the podium and give your name and your address?
Because I did jump in on this, I just want to, oh, yeah, Kristy McElroy, thirteen-eleven Woodward Avenue, Port St. Joe. I made a comment at the last meeting about Mr. Corran. He ran for seat number five, and I would like, entered into the record that he did run for seat number five. He also, at the last meeting, presented that his house, which is his girlfriend's house in Port St. Joe Beach, had flooded twice in the last eight years while he was living there. So, you know, if you look at his disclosure statement for running for seat number five, he is basically saying he lives in that district. So, again, I would like that entered into the record. There's something else in there that's very interesting and sort of telling, especially when you're working on budgets. Mr. Corran entered into his financial information that he was worth a positive forty thousand dollars. Well, if you just add and subtract, he's actually worth a negative forty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, it doesn't have anything to do with the topic.
Mr. Chairman, I'm speaking.
Hold up. It has nothing to do with the topic, but Mr. Bill Corran's name was brought up into this conversation?
But his finances were not a part of...
Again, he ran as a county commissioner, Mr. Chairman. He also stood at this podium, and when Mr. McLemore asked if he was a pack member, he said he was. Now, I am a private citizen exercising my freedom of speech, and if Mr. Corran is going to stand up here and make false allegations, I think we need to go ahead and, and just put it out there what this is about. And also, I would like entered into the county record that Mr. Corran, on April two thousand twelve, asked me, said, the revolution has begun, please join. I decline that offer because I don't want to be a part of a revolution that tears a county apart. The last item that I'd like entered in is I understand from Mr. Jeff Anderson's business partner that Mr. Anderson had recording devices, and may have very well recorded the conversation that he, that myself, Mr. Garth, and Mr. Corran had. I went and saw an attorney, and the attorney said that I should put forth a communication to these folks, which Ms. O'Brien was copied on, and say, allegedly, you may have recording devices, and I find this unethical. So, Mr. Corran returned and basically threatened me. I felt that it was a threat. It said causation and cessation, or as Jimmy Buffett says, you may just find yourself in one of my songs. Now, what I find fascinating is that we have wasted a year and a half with all this pack ridiculousness. And what we should be doing is putting forth this kind of energy and trying to move this county forward. So, yes, I will be entering this into the record. Thank you.
You have entered that into the... You have entered that into the record.
And I have entered it again, and that's my one.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you very much for your comments. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
We're going to go on to county staff business.
Mr. Chairman, I need to make a clarification, if I could.
What's wrong with that clock? What's wrong with that clock? It's not running. Okay. Guys, we need to get our clock fixed.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I need to make a, on the America's Ditch. My first came on the board. Uh, I was approached by a group about America's Ditch. I want this clarified, I was new on the board, I was green. Was given some false information. Then I'd done the right thing, I went to the staff administration. I went to the engineers, I got the truth on it. And, uh, that's the reason I haven't had any more about this thing with this America's Ditch. Imagine if you checked for all the law, the Florida statutes, done run out on anything on it. And why we just keep beating this dead horse, I don't know. But anyway, I wanted that clarified. I was given some inappropriate information. But I go to the correct place, who I should go to, to the administrator and with the, uh, engineering firm, and they, they laid it out on me.
But Mr. Mike Daniels, I was, I was approached about looking up different things that took place in the past. And my answer that I gave to that was, "I'm not here for the past. I'm here trying to make tomorrow better." But whatever I got to do to make tomorrow better, that's what I want to do. I don't want to dwell in the past too far. So, do we have anything else from the board? If not, we're going to go to our county staff, uh, Ms. Carrie. Ms. Becky. Carrie. Ms. Jennifer.
Um, just want to give you some highlights from the August report that you have in front of you. Good morning. Um, July bed tax revenue was up. So, we had another month of increase at 7.66%. Overall, year-to-date, the first 10 months were up 11.41%. So, we're pacing well. We're pacing ahead percentage-wise than our neighboring counties. Dollar-to-dollar revenues are up just over $67,000. And we, um, our budget was set on total revenues of $600,000. We've exceeded those revenues. We've collected more than that, a total of $660,000. So, we're pacing well, and August and September have not yet been reported. The Gulf County website continues to grow, 48% growth, August to August. Year-to-date, we're up 32% and will continue to drive traffic to that website. We continue, as a partner-based organization, to, um, send traffic to our partners. And we've done so, we've had a direct return and sent 11,766, um, leads this month to our partners. We've sent over 60,000 leads to partners. So, that, for me, says our programs are good and the return on investment is both good for the TDC and for our partners. Our social media network, we had a goal, starting in early February, of growing from 1,688 fans to 5,000. Currently, we are over 5,600 followers. And I have to commend Ms. Michelle Perrin and, um, our, our, uh, social media agency, No Luggage, for those, um, strategies, because they are, um, that's mostly time and thinking and creativity as opposed to paid media. The Gulf County Welcome Center, we had an increase of 16% um, this August as compared to last August. And we have 42,000, we've distributed 45,000 visitor guides so far since March. Also in front of you, you know, I, I attached a draft spreadsheet of our spend for next year. We have a $326,500 media budget. It's a draft. The tactics are not completed yet. We don't plan the tactics that far ahead. But I've divided up the cost for paid, owned, earned, and shared media. Um, after my October 1 council meeting, we'll have more details, and I'll get that to you for approval so I can start implementing the plan for next fiscal year. Um, we continue to be very creative, and, uh, we've launched our fall promotion last Wednesday. It's the Pinterest promotion. Again, let's just be nimble, it's daily work. But we have had over, it's a contest, a giveaway, and in the first five, uh, actually six days, we've had 225 entries. We've increased our Facebook followers by more than 230, and we've reached 110,000 people. Our goal is to reach, um, over 900,000 people by the end of September. We'll be dropping an e-blast out to 120,000 moms with young kids and baby boomers at the end of, actually next week. Also attached, you'll find our partner programs. They've been approved by the marketing committee. We had a workshop yesterday. We're in our selling process for our partner programs. We've, um, kept the four core levels of partner programs, and we've added some bundled options. As we move forward into a new website, there'll be some additional display and featured partner programs. We're starting the process for our visitor guide, which, for next year, which needs to be completed by early January. We have Q RFP, we have an RFP and an RFQ out. The printing for the, um, visitor guide, RFP, is, is out. And our Web Arc RFQ is out, and I didn't mess up Ms. Carrie in the procedure this time, which was great. We had a Pinterest workshop yesterday, uh, great coverage in the middle of the day, almost 30 people. We have some upcoming events I don't want you to forget about. We've got a number of fishing tournaments coming up. The Clean Fish Tournament is coming. The Sheriff's Bass, um, Tournament is coming, and the Catfish Classic, all at the end of the month. And, um, Bay Day and Park Appreciation Day are also coming up. And finally, it's, we've, I've been working very well with Mr. Moore and his team from maintenance. We have five of the eight kiosks, um, in the county installed. Gaskin Park will be up before the Catfish Classic. White City's up, the roof's going on. And Highland View is up, and the roof's going on. Also, Indian Pass is up, Salinas, and downtown at Frank Pike Park. And that's it. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Houston. I just want to commend the county maintenance staff on their removal of our buildings. They're some of the best work I've seen. I've held over the Oxford 23 years, back in the 60s and 70s, and done a lot of inspection during that time. And I would don't compare it to anybody else, they're top-notch.
One question. I've got, uh, property and casualty insurance and workers' comp renewals for you today. I gave you all, uh, a four or five-page document right before the meeting. If you'll turn to the second page, I'll just go through this document and come back, add a few things, some questions. Uh, the overall premium for all property, casualty, and workers' comp insurance is $1,552 less than the expiring rates, despite increases in total property values and the state workers' comp rates. You'll see below a brief summary of the renewal terms and conditions. A property appraisal was conducted, conducted in January of this year, resulting in a slight reduction in the total replacement cost, along with two buildings being added for a total value of $168,466. The property rate remained flat. Adjustments were made on the extra expense line, business income sub-limits for coverage to better protect the county from a catastrophic loss cost. Computer coverage limits were moved to the contents limits of the coverage, uh, for savings of $4,189. Down to our auto fiscal damage, raising the physical damage deductible to $10,000 saves us $10,535 in annual premium. Average loss for physical damage claims are less than $5,000 per year over the past two years. Uh, and one note on the flood insurance. Well, I'd like to note that we currently have flood insurance on everything that is not in an A, AE, V, or VE flood zone. The board has not purchased this flood insurance, uh, on properties in the past due to the high cost affiliated in getting a quote, along with the high cost of flood insurance in general. This will require, to get a flood insurance, uh, it's required to have a updated, uh, elevation certificate to do that for all properties. Going back up top, uh, the two buildings that I added, uh, one would be the Public Works Building, and I also added the TDC Building, uh, pending, uh, the potential bring that on with, an agreement with the city. And going back to the auto fiscal damage, uh, we're going to raise that, our anticipation to raise that $10,000 to a $10,000 deductible. We've got 52 units or vehicles, units or units considered trailers, uh, so 52 units or vehicles with a value less than $5,000. And then we've got 76 vehicles or trailers with a value less than $10,000. So, it makes good sense to do that. Um, also, we, we haven't had a claim, uh, over $10,000 in the past two years. Um, history is history, uh, things can happen. But, uh, it's, that's my recommendation. If you'll turn to the next page, I can go through, uh, line item by line item. Uh, it's, this is a comparison from this year, the 12, 13 fiscal year to the 12, to 13, 14 fiscal year. Uh, on our property, which would include in the Marine, uh, you're going to show a reduction there from 287,000 down to 199,520. A small decrease there. Uh, our crime is going to stay the same. And moving down to general liability, which would include, uh, excluder the sheriff's office, only the jail, uh, we're showing a small increase there from 23,694 to 26,560. Uh, next, if you'll flip the page to your auto, this will, this will be where you'll see the decrease, mainly because of the, the increase in the deductible there. $39,664 down to $30,979. Uh, public officials, uh, liability, show, show a small increase, 22,000 even to 23,595. And next, uh, your workers' comp, you'll show a, a slight increase there due to state rising rates. Lastly, um, you'll show your totals, the 408,25 down to the 406,473. Uh, those are my recommendations. And the last page would show an annual premium break now.
Um, do I have anything from the board?
Uh, Brett, this is, uh, Priya, correct?
That's right, and it's, it's, uh, written through Pigeon.
Okay. I, I sit on that Pigeon Trust, uh, so I, I'm going to abstain from that.
Right.
Need a motion?
I need a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll place a motion and all of it.
Motion by Commissioner Mike Daniels. Do I second? I got a second by Commissioner Macklemore. Do I have any opposed? Motion passed, poll with one is same.
I've got two more things, uh, insurance related. Uh, one would be our inmate medical insurance renewal. We have, it'll actually decrease this year due to the, the amount of, uh, county inmates that are, uh, the average daily count of inmates that are in the jail facility. Went from 30 last year to 30 this year. Uh, that premium total will be $12,921.
Full move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
That has nothing to do with Priya.
Right, that's the difference.
I have a second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and no.
And lastly, I have the, uh, Florida Sheriff's Self-Insurance Program, uh, listing as the board, an additional covered member. Uh, that total premium, it's actually a decrease this year as well. Uh, $2,749. And would like your approval on that as well.
Full move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Thank you.
Mr. Joe. Mr. Marshall. Mr. David.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I gave you a handout on the annual recertification. Uh, I just need the force commission to have the chairman sign the, uh, uh, page one of the AW 214. And the following two pages is a listing of things that we're certifying that we're accomplishing to maintain our CRS rating. Um, of note is, we have 38 repetitive loss properties. And, um, part of that notification, we sent out 125 letters to the areas. So, um...
Full move for the chairman to sign.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
I have.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and no.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Michael. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first, uh, issue, I have a packet in front of each of you. Um, they've been tagged one through six. I'd like to go through them with you, if I could. Uh, the first is a request to, um, uh, for permission to advertise a public speaking ordinance. Um, the Senate Bill and legislature have passed Senate Bill 50, will be codified in the Florida statutes. Um, I provided you a proposed ordinance that addresses the, um, legislation and also summarizes some of the policies the county's adopted over the past few years. I've been using those policies in the minutes from these meetings. And what you have in front of you is, um, a start with regards to a proposed ordinance that will comply with that Florida statute. In the past, the commission has had a policy, the policies. Um, this will codify for Gulf County on how to proceed with regards to public speaking. Um, if with your authority, we can go to advertise, and then we can conduct public hearings. Um, one, we can advertise when we're public hearing. In the meantime, we can, each commissioners can maintain public comment, individual. Um, and also offer it to myself and the staff with regards to changes or suggestions on what you want to see otherwise. Um, but today I ask for your authority to go to advertise.
Full move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike, Macklemore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, the second, number two in the packet is something I sent out to you all, uh, received from Mr. Spellman following your August 13 meeting. He had a presentation from your special counsel with regards to redistricting, um, our voting rights consent decree. Uh, he had made a presentation to you all. Um, there was a vote of his board for him to proceed with the scope of services and engagement letter and a detailed summary of what he would commence with. He's come back with that engagement letter. Uh, if you've had the opportunity, I sent it to you all. Had an opportunity to read that. Uh, the last paragraph, uh, in his letter, uh, he states, "I'm asking for the board to approve experience, scope of our services and representation to the board in matters set forth above. This request does not require the board to incur any expenses or authorization to incur any expenses on the board's behalf, except as the collection and analysis of data as described in the second paragraph of the letter. With your approval, I will respond, um, and notify, uh, Mr. Spellman to commence with his services, uh, so he can proceed."
Full move to proceed, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed?
Yes.
That's two opposed, motion carries, three to two.
And the three in the packet, um, is the, uh, most recent interlocal agreement that was ratified by the city of Port St. Joe at its meeting, uh, last Tuesday. Um, as you recall, on your August 27 meeting, uh, you had accepted the interlocal, uh, in its entirety but for a wind provision. Uh, that wind provision is paragraph number four. Uh, if you all have that in front of you, um, I can read that provision to you all and then allow the commission to, uh, proceed with comment. Uh, the interlocals between the city and county states as follows in paragraph four. "The city acknowledges that a portion of the consideration for the transfer of county water systems to city ownership, which occurred on June 21, 2008, was an agreement that water rates be equal within the city limits. In the unincorporated service area, rates for water and sewer services provided by the city in unincorporated areas of the county will be the same for city and the county residents. This paragraph does not apply to any maintenance charge assessed for grinder pumps required in connection with pressurized sewer lines."
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve this. I, I, it gives us clarification and assurances that our county residents aren't going to be charged any more than city residents. So, I'll motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels.
One thing I would just like to add, Mr. Novak, we had talked about this, um, regarding those items that were in the original interlocal agreement that the engineer was stating are completed. I know we had some emails. I would just like to have that together on the engineer's letterhead, saying that those things are completed.
I'll make that request.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager, I have a second. On that.
Yeah, somebody's second.
Mr. Mike Daniels, second.
Yeah, on the three, two.
If, Mr. Chairman, if you can, include in that motion just to amend it the commissioner's request that we put that in as an exhibit, the, Mr. Jones, his letter, he's provided email correspondence between Mr. Gibson and myself, will add as an exhibit to the actual interlocal.
I'll include that in the.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Yeager. Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, next item I have goes back about a year or two. Several, each of you commissioners have commented or heard from constituents with regards to the broadcasting in the past. It's been an issue that's been dealt with by the TDC and also the commission and the administrator. Most recently, Mr. Murphy last year was awarded the linear contract on his proposal. That contract expires on October first. Back in August, you authorized us to go out and advertise for an RFQ for those recording services and broadcasting. That advertisement will run this week on the twelfth. The specs for that services are attached in number four in your packet. The deadline for the folks that are watching today that want to bid on that, it's on the county website, it's in the clerk's office, it's in the newspaper, and I believe they put it out through the bid notification service within the region. And for the vendors locally as well, this is available, the specs. The deadline will be the twenty-third of September, and then the county will come back with recommendations for you all to award the RFQ to commence on October first. The fifth item in your packet is in response to the commissioner's question at the last meeting, myself. We had our workshop at the Honeyville Community Center where we had a public health workshop and discussed the Sacred Heart Health Systems opening up at the Weewalk Clinic. Commissioner McDaniel had inquired as to any update. I spoke with Mr. Hall in Lake Millard last week following the Health Trust Committee meeting at the hospital. And after that, they provided an announcement. It's in your packet, I'd like to read it if I may, for the public. It was from Mr. Hall. I'm pleased to announce that we are opening the Sacred Heart Medical Group in Weewalk Hitzka on Monday, September twenty-third. The clinic will be open Monday through Friday from seven AM to four PM with a break for lunch. Primary care services provided by Nancy Anderson, advanced registered nurse practitioner. Nancy Jones, Sacred Heart Hospital, bombed the Gulf a year ago and brings a wealth of experience, knowledge, and compassionate care to our team. She will be an incredible asset to the Weewalk community. In addition to primary care services, Sacred Heart will continue to offer lab and X-ray services every Friday from seven AM to one PM. As the primary care clinic grows, we look forward to expanding lab and X-ray services as well as based on the demand. We will host an open house to celebrate the opening of the clinic on Monday, twenty-third from seven-thirty in the morning to eight-thirty. In the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County's building located at eight oh seven, Highway twenty-two, we invite all community members in the years to attend this event to meet our healthcare team and tour the facility. Thank you for your patience as we move through the economic challenges that so much improve the need and secure the necessary funding for the new clinic. We would not have been able to open this clinic without the support of the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County and the support of the county overall to continue to expand Sacred Heart services. It is an honor and privilege to serve Gulf County and we hope to make a positive impact in the Weewalk community. Signed, Roger Hall. The last item in the packet is an order issued by Judge Fischel yesterday. Received it from the clerk. As with regards to the court authority in Capital City and the summary judgment motions that have been filed on the foreclosure matter, as I might report it to you at our last meeting two weeks ago, those hearing, those oral arguments were presented to Judge Fischel. Judge Fischel issued an order, most notable on the second page of that order. It indicates that the plaintiff's motion, as well as cross motion for summary judgment, ought to be rescheduled for a hearing which allows sufficient time to address the matters raised. It's consistent with Judge Fischel's comments during the oral arguments. Essentially, he's requested additional presentation from the parties before he moves on to those summary judgment motions. So I'll continue to keep your updates on, on development on that foreclosure. The next item I had to report is the probation pretrial release fee ordinances have, are going to be advertised this Thursday in the Star. On the twenty-fourth, they'll be introduced for public hearing, at which time you will have the opportunity to consider those for adoption. Another issue that came up this past week is with regards to the county policy on purchasing and procurement. The TDC in the past has presented requests for you all to provide authority for direct media purchases. I've gone back through the minutes, there's been two separate occasions where Ms. Jenkins has requested the ability to go out and do a direct media purchase. Sole source providers, certain TV stations, certain publishers. This commission has given her the authority to do that within her budget. There is an instrument called an insertion order, and that is a reservation of time or pages in advance in these publications around these television stations that need to be signed. It's essentially a purchase order, if you will. Within her budget, she needs to sign those and have the authority to purchase that ad space well in advance when the prices are presumably more competitive and low. It's consistent with your approval in the past. I know it came up as an issue between the TDC and trying to get approvals for it with the county staff. And I'd ask if we can, just to memorialize that possibly in a policy going forward, maybe for the twenty-fourth, that we can put it in writing, just for clarification. And I don't know, Ms. Jenkins, did I summarize that correctly or anything else? So you have approved it in the past, an insertion order is a purchase order for the media bias. You've approved it to go beyond that, for instance, in the bid policy of a ten thousand dollar threshold. You need to go out to advertise for that. With Ms. Jenkins' recommendation, if it is a sole source provider or sole outlet for media advertising, you give them the permission to go do that under the budget. So what we'll do is memorialize that in the policy so it's in writing, so in the future we won't have to come back and ask you for permission each time. Is there any objection to putting that before you all?
They didn't use to.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have this time.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. This is a paper copy, so if I ask Monday, what is your meeting? Then the proposed watershed meeting in EOC on September twenty-sixth, from one o'clock to four o'clock. And this is a same group from that earlier, cut must go in EOC two and nine must go. Same meeting we've been having in Bay County a couple times, we've also done in Bay County and Gulf County. But this one, the amount of message we would be to have a public, early sort of public here on the twenty-sixth, call maybe more one commissioner at this meeting. But this is a watershed meeting for, for the counties to the east of us.
And, Don, I think when we first initiated this, it was going to be between Wakulla, Franklin and Gulf Counties watershed. And she's left off, and Bert's with the nature conservancy heads this, these meetings up. She's left off St. Joe Bay. Can we, can we actually touch base with her?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so moved to proceed with a public notice of the meeting.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no. Commissioner, the next item is this board sheet. If this is essential, just for your information, this is a class who can be held at the end of Bay County on October the third, from eight o'clock, twelve o'clock, Central County, making the sheriff's office. Though our elected training is required by state now, and one commissioner's already signed up for it, but this would be more quick way of getting training.
Mr. But, let me check that with you on this. I'm sure in my thirteen-year career that I haven't taken the class.
I'm not sure you have, okay? You, I think about that a lot.
Let me do some research on that.
Yeah, I, we need to mention too, Don, that this same class will be held by fact to at one of the fact meetings too, so whichever one you can make.
Yes, it will also be part of the Bay County meeting and West Palm Beach meeting. Well, next item, we do a special district, while I'm telling you last time, should there was two special districts, one in Delaware, one in West Palm District, there are those higher and blue water and sewer district. This is two districts, these districts were set, set up by the state legislature a long time ago, probably in the fifties. I think Highland Dew were done in the sixties, and maybe the Netherlands might have been done in the fifties or early sixties. And that time the dam went in. And they're on the books, they are not renewed lies, there's not at all anything left of Highland Dew Water Sewer District. And we got completely totally replaced, there was no sewer, it was a stone river sewer. And the water had been completely discontinued. And we have a new water system in Highland Dew. But if we look at those two out of the books, apparently, central rain is going through the process of being essential to remove some special districts. If it showed up well again, we're districts, it's a much cheaper way for us. We can add those two districts to the bill and go through and, and let for somebody in Gulf County between now and, and the time, when the session is in spring, that decide you don't want to do it. We wouldn't have a lot of people to chip, whether it were them.
Yeah, I'm so moved to proceed, they serve no purpose now.
I got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
A second.
Got a second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no. The next item, Mr. Chairman, is, according to Consortium, responding to the eighteenth of EOC eighteen, talking to Mr. Yeager. What would probably be moved, the board to rename an alternate to be at that meeting in the eighteenth, is the value of our meeting is to treasure the Senate's regs out for comments. I think Mr. Attorney had a conference call Friday to deal with those regs. Also, we're sure the Bush regulation will discuss in eighteenth, in West Palm Beach, it'll be a very important meeting.
Absolutely.
If we could get.
And, and Don, we've, I've talked to Don about this, I'd like to have Don as the alternate. Some of these meetings I can't make, the majority, I've made them all except this next one coming up. Many, many counties have made their administrator their, their alternate. I'd like for Don to be there. It is a very important meeting. Finally, as for the public's knowledge, we have, the Treasury's come out with the regs. So it's going to be discussion of that. The attorney will be on a conference call with the other county attorneys and the attorney for the consortium. So these are very important milestones, so to speak, in moving forward with this Restore Act. But I'd make a motion to make Don the, the alternate so he can attend that meeting down there and so.
Motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no. Tomorrow week, this item, after, after Mr. Attorney, that's his company's call Friday, and this meeting in the eighteenth in West Palm Beach, I think it'd be a good time to finally reach the call, a meeting on the local Restore Act Committee to get it right back up speed. We were being, we were stepped back and stood down for perhaps a couple, two or three months, definitely during the last few months, but probably a week after that should be a good time to have a local Restore Act Committee meeting.
Yeah, I, I agree, Don, and that's, you know, one of the things that we need to move forward on. We depend a lot on those, on this particular committee, and they need to, they need to make recommendations to our board and, so, yeah.
My last comment. This is the third week, my right hand, and the man has been out to get all her information that she's in Mayo and Jacksonville and Hospital last week and continuing on this week. Maybe it's where I'm in, and luckily, the first week this year is out, Mr. Arm is out, and that's another right hand that's hard to get, get by without. And luckily for me, we got the real team to do help and do everything we got to do. There's, there's a lot of things going through our hands, to us, I mean, I'm talking about the lady is busy one hundred percent of the time. At the beginning, three weeks, I mean, it can really set you back. You cannot, I'm telling you, five board members, you cannot keep up with the work when you don't have the people that are doing the work. And we're going, we're going to keep it going, we're going to keep it flowing. But this, there's a lot of work to be done, and not enough people do it. I am not saying we need more people. If we're going to get through, she'll be back, and we're continuing that line. Just, just for instance, the week before she went to Jacksonville, she reached out to the EZDA clearing report on Enterprise Zone. It said, it will become, this comes sunset in twenty fifteen, in twenty fifteen. It has become a job to directly report a variety of state government offices, and drive this over, it was one month, and I'm sure part of the reason we haven't do so much work is trying to justify Enterprise Zones. And if they're good sunset, it's been fifteen, and Bert doesn't have a job either. So, so it's probably a reason we have a lot of work. But I'm saying this to the board. You, you give an evening, and you talk about it here, and we're doing a whole lot of work. But in my opinion, and I've talked to you about it, this is something that EZDA needs to be doing. Enterprise Zone fits into EZDA, I mean, this I could go up, it should be there, and, and you have a lot of work. If she had got sick one month earlier, then we would not have been getting that clearing reporting to, to the government's office. But it's a very critical position, and we're in a very critical time in our office, we are minimum, only good luck. When everybody's out working, everybody feels good, we're winning. We're not asking for help. But I just want you to know when we, we do have one out, or we're too out, and for part of the, the week, week for life, we're too out. So, that's my comment.
I, I would like to ask the board to allow Mr. Butler to reach out to Gary Magison regarding taking over the responsibilities of the Enterprise Zone reporting. What I had seen in their correspondence was that they had intention of doing that, so I think we may just need to communicate with Mr. Magison.
I know. I know who to talk to, and I understand, I think I understand EZDA's position, they, I think they don't have the money to do it. Lots being programmed, I don't think we have the money to do it. Enterprise Zone, EZDA, they're the same as the government, EZDA. It goes way to the DA, we just see it one point in time, and it worked perfectly when it's not ready. We are, the reason this thing has to handle it, because it's got to be handled. We have Enterprise Zone, we have an obligation to the state and to the government's office to continue it. If you don't always do it, we don't want to.
Yeah, there's something we're looking to do with EZDA, reach out to Gary again and see if we can't get him to, to take care of that thing. I mean, it's eighty thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money that's going to that organization. Reach out to him again, though.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Chair.
Have anything?
Mr. Michael Moore.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing, and it, it may be already cleared up, I'm not sure, but Mr. Butler, I'm talking about the, the, you know, the Irish Creek Road, there's about a hundred yards of dirt that goes down to the lower lemon. But I know, I know that we graded in the past, I think we've done a limited maintenance order on it way back, but I'm not sure. But anyway, what I want to ask the board is to clear that up and make sure that, you know, let's do a limited maintenance on that hundred yard.
Yeah, somebody mentioned that to me too, and, and, but I thought we'd, I thought we'd had a limited maintenance agreement on that.
We may have.
Can you check on that?
One check, I don't know.
We just put it out right now, Mr. Yeager, and it'll be done. So I make a motion that we do it.
Second, I mean, we've been, we've been doing it in the past.
I can, I got a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just, I think there's a comment, but also, part of the policy on limited maintenance agreements, we state the public purpose of the, the purpose serving the public. So if you can do that, Commissioner, then I think there's a discussion.
I had a little letter from the owner at the time, depending on how far down it was, if they, if they did not want to be kept. That may not be the same safety that you're talking about. We always assumed it was the county, right? The county had continued it all the way to the, to the, to the vote.
We have. We have, but I want to make sure that we're correct with this. So my reason is for ambulance purposes.
Well, I think Search and Rescue is the one that contacted me too, about that particular route.
We're only talking a hundred yards, and all we're, all we're talking is grading, so no dirt, no film. That's my motion.
Got that motion, Mr. Michael Moore, second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no. Mr. Yeager?
I got a couple items. Number one, I've spoken with staff about this, and I've actually taken public works down to Two Palms. I've got a similar situation that Commissioner Bryan's got in, in her district with some water. Two Palms is county roads. I'm going to meet with their organization, their homeowners association. They've got some drainage issues that I think that we can fix, however, some of those, the association's going to have to spend a few dollars on some culverts. And so, just, just for the board's information, I'm working with the homeowners association in Two Palms. It's a county road, where, you know, we, we can do the work. However, I'm going to work with the association to make sure that, that they're on board and they install the culverts that they need to get the proper drainage there. And while we're talking about that, have we followed up yet with the issue that Commissioner Bryan has in her district? Do we need to be doing anything there?
I have been working with Mr. Price, and I'm going to speak with Mr. Butler after the meeting about some information that he had requested. I'll meet with you after the meeting.
All right. The next item, as I had mentioned a few weeks ago, is the chairmanship's coming up very near the future. We need to go ahead and, and I'd like to make a motion, I think Commissioner McDaniel's in line to take the chair, from Mr. McDaniel to take the chair. Commissioner McDaniel's in line to take the chair, from Mr. McDaniel to take the chair, Mr. Michaelmore, you're in line to take the vice chair, so, uh, I'd like to give you that off to you and go ahead and establish that, so we'll be ready when the new year comes, and I'll make a motion to that effect.
I got a motion by Mr. Jaeger.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Hear me, I know we've mentioned it, and we've had conversation about it, but we need to move forward, too, because we've got some extra revenue in this, but next year's budget, October one, on the beach driving on it, increase those fees and that, so just remind me, let's work on that and try to get that done, uh, so those new fees will be in place. Um, wanted to talk about the port just a minute, uh, we've got a federal lobbyist that have been working with us on COBRA and FEMA, and obviously, the, the port authority is needing some dredging. I've talked with our lobbyist, with our federal lobbyist, they, they've got a, a gal named Val, and she's a port expert, uh, it doesn't cost the county any more money for them to be working with St. Joe's lobbyist in in concert with them, and and, uh, so I actually set up a meeting with them, uh, met with their lobbyist and our lobbyist, they're gonna work together, trying to get this port and and get the dollars that we need for that dredging. And so, hopefully, uh, just, just for the public's knowledge, we're, we're trying to work through our, our federal lobbyists and helping that situation, so hopefully we can get that port funded. Um, I think that, oh, uh, there was, uh, the Gulf Power Symposium, the Economic Development Symposium they have every year, it's in your information pack, some of us need to go, I I plan on going to that, but that's something that that even staff may look at, because, um, every economic development, uh, organization in the region goes to that along with elected officials and all, so if you can make it, try to make it, if, if, uh, it's valuable information, and, but, other than that, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's all I have.
Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a few items. Uh, first of all, uh, I see we have some representatives here, the warden and assistants, um, Mr. Blackwood, Mr. Roddenberry, and I apologize to the other gentleman, I can't recall his name right off the top, but, uh, last week, I had the opportunity to go down to Franklin County and be with Senator, uh, Monford, Senator Bradley, and Representative Bashir's, and I was asked to give a presentation on small counties, how they work and coincide with our, uh, correctional system for the state of Florida. And, uh, a very good productive meeting, we had all the high brass with the Department of Corrections there, and, uh, I thank Senator Bradley, after we got through, was really impressed at what we do in these small counties, and, uh, while these gentlemen are here, I want to thank you for all you do to help Gulf County here, we, we could not do it without you people, uh, and we work together, and we're gonna continue and have a good working relationship, but I just wanted to report that to the board, I've got to be with two senators and our state representative. Uh, just some minor things, I'd like these cleared up, the state of, uh, uh, Florida DOT went up to Highway seventy-one and three eighty-six, uh, just south of Weaver Hedges, and they put up a sign there at this dangerous intersection, which the sheriff and I have, uh, been, since he's been in office working on, the sign's probably in excess of a thousand dollars. And, uh, I want the board, I, I won't run on my own, but I'd like the board to see if we could maybe, uh, get Jake back here to go up with the main, uh, Public Works and put up about three pipes, cause it, we're back into it, the pipe alone, according to the people, uh, I think it's transfilled, put it in, the pipe alone, I guess the, the pipe holding this up is, uh, two hundred dollars, now it's not counting the, uh, you have a, uh, you call those cats, uh, solar, uh, supply to it, so I'd like, I'd like this board to, uh, give the Public Works permission to go up and maybe put three pipes up around this. Now, they put them high on there, built a concrete pad, put in milled asphalt, it really looks nice, anybody going by there, but I think we need to step up, and it's on account on three eighty-six side, and maybe put a little protection for their investment.
So, we've probably got that on, on the yard anyway, don't we? Wouldn't take much to do that, yeah, that's fine.
I just wanted, I, I want the board to acknowledge of it and and to approve that. Uh, next of all, I need, uh, bring it to the board's attention, I need, uh, be Mr., I'm offering her back here, I need three, oh, let me change that, I got it backwards, I need six, six feet picnic tables for Dead Lakes Park. Last weekend, we had two vacant spots, is all we had filled up. We don't have, and the reason we want six, uh, these tables, just six feet, normally you just have two people, sometime three, where they can pick them up, but I need this, we were short tables up there, and that park is beginning, well, that camp area's beginning to pick up, we're getting more and more, and it's generating money here for this county, but.
Yeah, it pays for itself, just get them.
Yeah, I know.
You see, Mike can help you with it.
Anytime I spend tax dollars, money, I want to, to move the board, make it aware there. Next, uh, on the, uh, this board appointed me to the ACF, Appalachian State, Chattanooga Flint River Systems, we're short one member, and I'd like for this board, I've asked a gentleman, uh, who probably could, uh, patch Mr. Michaelmore over here, as far as river knowledge on it, uh, to, uh, approve Mr. Charles Nunry, to, uh, sit on that board along with me to represent Gulf County.
Second that, so moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, second by Mr. Mike Daniels, Mr. Michaelmore, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
All right, my next.
Do we need a motion for those picnic tables?
I made a motion, I never got a second.
Uh, second.
I got a motion by Mr. Michaelmore, second by Mr. Jaeger.
Where is the funding coming from, from the parks budget?
Well, I, I, I think all of us have some parks, uh, monies there, this particular park actually is the only one that pays for itself. They can probably ta, take it out of the monies that are generating, it goes into general fund, I'm, I'm, I feel sure, but we can take it from any line, Adam.
Yes. Okay. Next, I have a question here, maybe we can ask, we have some staff here that can answer this, about, uh, this past Thursday, I was con, uh, gentleman, Mr. Conway, uh, approached me about a ditch that, uh, joins his property, or is on his property, uh, we, I think, refer to it as a Conway ditch, but in reality, it's, uh, to help, it's the Blake family that's behind there, and, uh, why any maintenance wasn't being done on it, and I, I, you know, I thought off the top of my head, I said, it may be about three months ago, we did make, and before this board, to my knowledge, that we were going to do there, and, uh, I said, I don't know, but I'll, I'll bring it up to the board. But I went out yesterday, I had a call to come through over street and to speak with the gentleman, so I went on to check this, and what I can see it needs, and maybe, uh, yeah, Mr. Caution, you might can shed some light on it, as far as the bottom of the ditch, it looks like the water's moving, but it's the, there's a road to the left of it as you approach it, or you, you, I know you're well familiar, could you, uh, come up and, uh, looks like to me, it just needs cutting, uh, where you can get your vehicles in there for mosquito control.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not real sure that the bottom of the ditch needs anything.
It, it, it looks all right to me, I, I got out yesterday and walked down it, and look, there's no trees growing in it, no shrubs, it, the, but it's on the edge, I would call it the south edge.
Yeah, if you're looking at the ditch, on the south side of the ditch, there's, there's a, an area.
Ten to twelve foot road goes down there.
Right away, you can drive down in there for some peace, and when it's, when it is cleared or cleaned up, we'll back a spray truck down, and I'm sure it helps the people in that, in that area.
Could we, would our work crews possibly get that thing where you can get your vehicles in there?
Yeah, I, I think we've got an easement through there anyway, it's something.
We have, it's, Mr. Butler, do we have a, uh, a, a limited work agreement on that?
We have a limited work agreement dated October twelve, two thousand and twelve, for the ditch, to keep the water flowing in the ditch.
Okay.
I, I would recommend that you expand that agreement on, well, that, in order to get the ground, you know, that road to fight mosquitoes.
Yeah.
It was adjacent to that ditch, I would recommend you expand that agreement on, on another agreement. Uh, don't go across Mr. Conway's property, there's nothing to do with Mr. Conway, it is to, to drain the pasture in behind between Conway's property and the county line, because other people.
The fast rest of Blake's property, or the, or the family, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, but we're looking at what we have, specifically for the ditch, to keep water flowing in that ditch, and I, if it's something we need, I recommend that we also get an agreement signed with Mr. Conway to, to, um, to have him, to cut it away.
You want to put that in form of a motion?
I do, I'll place in the motion.
Motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, got a second by Mr. Jaeger, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McDaniel, while Mark is up, I just wanted, he had, uh, provided two contracts to me this morning, um, from the Florida Department of Ag, with regards to mosquito control contractual agreement, if I can request, um, I hadn't, I'd just gotten this morning, but subject to attorney review, if we can authorize Mark to sign these following attorney review, saves us two weeks before we do that.
Well, they're gonna require Chairman's signature.
Well, they got you down, but if it's possible, if we can authorize, subject to attorney review, we can get the signature.
Subject to attorney review.
Motion by Mr. Jaeger.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, couple of items. We've sat here this morning, we've had some heated discussions, and I think it's time, it's past time this board set up a policy as to who is gonna con, do contract negotiations, and who does the board want. We need a policy on that, it's not the board members, uh, to me to go out and negotiate a contract, or Mr. Butler. Mr. Bryan, anyone, we need to set up a policy on who is going to negotiate contracts for the county board of county commissioners.
I'm sorry, I always assumed that we had the policy that the, the chief administrator and the county attorney do those negotiations, I know that's what, the way it's been in the past, but, but if you need a motion to that, so move for, for, to designate the county attorney and the chief administrator, or his designate for.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger. Second by Mr. Mike, Michaelmore, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
I have one other, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, again, this is on policy, as, uh, as to who's going to sign the work, the staff or our professional services outside of our normal, uh, operations. What I'm getting to again there is the fact that, uh, again, I said at the beginning of this meeting, uh, all of you sat here, we had some heated discussions over some things, Mr. Butler's only one man, and, uh, his wagon is overloaded, overloaded, I try not to impose on him any more than I have to, and if I do, I try to keep it brief, but we need to settle limitations as to what we expect out of this man and his staff, and our attorney also.
I'm not exactly sure what that means, maybe you want to, um, elaborate a bit?
I, I would, to be honest with you.
Go ahead.
If I may make a comment on this, you know, this is where I have a big issue with it, Ms. Bryant, you, you email Mr. Butler to this, and it's on a project that's six years old, it's America's Ditch, I'm, I'm not gonna go a whole lot into it, but here's where we're getting into problem, you have eleven questions on here, it would take Mr. Butler, no telling how long, he, he, he's got, he don't have a staff, this Leon is sick, but he don't have the time to sit here and dig up and research six years of something that's old, and that's why I made the comment, you know, like I did, if, if they'll have an issue or whatever with the America's Ditch, you know, go file a complaint on it with the state attorney's office, let them do this work, Mr. Butler can't do it, but this is, this is what's happening, he don't have the time or the staff to do and dig up this type of work. That's my only comment. Let me, let me clarify here, uh, Mr. Bryan is absolutely correct, but, uh, on certain items, and I use a word outside of the normal course, but when we go on, if I've got something I want to really go into, I should bring it before this board and get the board, if the board approves it, then Mr. Butler, if it takes him six months, then he's, it's board approved. But for me, to just send Mr. Butler out, or anybody, the attorney or any of the staff member, I don't think that's right, I think decisions that matter, there's certain things that must be board approved, and that's just like I had this young lady come this morning about utilizing our Dead Lakes campground, I could have probably told her, yeah, that's fine, but I want it board approved, there's certain things in here that must be board approved. We will stay with that, we'll all be all right, all be all right, and everybody don't know who's on first base, but I don't want to go out on tangents here, it's not right, it's not professional, and it's not good for the community, and that's, that's the thing, thing, I want board approval.
Let me clarify that.
Sure.
The request that I've made, I rarely ask for it by a certain date, maybe once or twice on something small, I've asked for it before a meeting, so I, I don't put any deadline on. Now, I don't believe that it's proper for this board to try to limit access to information to any commissioner, and particularly on items and issues that go on in that commissioner's district. So, I will continue to look into issues in my district, and I, I won't have another commissioner telling me that I don't have access to the information, like Commissioner Mclemore stated, on, on road contracts. Now, I tend to do things in writing, I'm professionally trained, and in my business and legal experience, I put things in writing, um, I think it's more clear to the person I'm requesting them from, but when I ask questions, I'm more than happy to sit down with Mr. Butler and talk through those i, items, those issues, the things that he knows simply, he can talk to me, and he can ask for clarification on anything that takes more time to research, it's a communication tool, and it, it is improper, in my opinion, for this board to try to restrict the communication of the board and the staff.
I, you know, let me get into this a little bit, I, I don't think that that's what.
I'm lying, I'm not directing this at any member, here, here's what I, here's, here's my policies.
Number one, we're a legislative body, we're just like Congress, or we're just like the state legislature or whatever, it, you, we have to work as a board, I'm not a dictator, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm one member of the public. I agree that when, when it's, it, when, when we've got staff, sure, all of us stop in and say, hey, Don, what do you know about this? All, all of us do that, all of us take a little time with staff, and it takes a lot of time, and I don't think we should limit that. I, I, I'm, I, 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 and I don't think that's what, uh, Commissioner Mclemore's suggesting. I do think that we act as a board, we act as a body, we, we, we're, not one of us a dictator, we're not, we don't live in a communist nation, we, we, we live in, in the, in, in where we live, in the United States of America's great country, greatest country on earth, they say, in, in my opinion, Gulf County's greatest county, and, uh, you know, however, I understand that we do need to set policy, we've got an administrator, and we've got a county attorney, we've got an assistant administrator, we've got staff that needs to be directed by this board, we're a legislative body, we need to legislate, they need to carry out board policy, and, and, uh, you know, I, I agree, there needs to be some, some, uh, some kind of consistency on what we're requesting staff to do, especially if I go on and ask him, or something, and it's gonna take him two or three days, I, I, I think that that should come before the board, and that's not a problem, I don't think any of this board member would stop anybody from trying to get any information on any particular subject, I do think that we need to have a, have a policy, we act as a board, we're a five-member board, and there's a reason for that, and, and, I, I agree with that, I agree with the concept.
Why would the board weigh in on a request for information by a county commissioner? It's not, I need this information tomorrow, drop everything and work on my request, if a commissioner makes a request for information, the board should not have to vote on that.
If, if, if it ties up staff to where they can't functionally do their job, there's a problem with that, and here's, here's what I say to that, if it's an issue that you want, whether it's America's Ditch or whatever it is, whatever deal it is, if, if it's, it's something that's gonna, that you're not pressed with time, there's no problem with you bringing it before the board and saying, look, I've got a request, it may take a few days, this board's not gonna obstruct that, but, but I think there needs to be a policy that, 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 that gives the staff, uh, a direction and a policy that this board, as five members, present out there, and I, I, I agree, I agree with the concept.
I believe that the staff is professional enough to reach out, like you said, if you made a request for the staff member to say, this is gonna take me several days, or this is outside of my ability to, to take care of, I think our staff is professional enough to respond. Now, if, if I make. Now, if, if I make, I'm just speaking for myself, if I make a request of a staff member that is difficult, or that they are already overwhelmed, that they cannot meet, then I would just expect them to talk to me about it. I don't think that we need to set policy that the other commissioners decide what information can be requested by any individual commissioner.
This policy is not trying to do that. This policy is setting a policy for staff to follow, and we're a legislative body as a whole, five members, we need to set that policy for our staff, and, and I agree totally, and, and I, I'm not going to debate it long, because it's not a big issue to be, because anything that you bring up, that you want information on, you're probably going to get the approval of the board to get the information, as staff can, but we need to have a policy for our administration and our staff, all of our staff, to be able to follow to say, look, here's board policy, bring this before the board, and we'll go forward, and, and, and I, I agree with that.
So are you saying that the board has not been voting on actions that, I mean, don't actions come before the board now? We vote on everything that requires voting. I don't, I think that this is an unnecessary, my opinion is it's unnecessary.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
I'll, I'll second.
Can you clarify that for me, because I'm not real sure what we're, our, our policy is.
I mean, I, I, I think there ought to be a, a timeframe that the staff can say, oh, this is going to take hours upon hours of staff time, so I don't know if you want to put an hour on it, or-
They can say that. They can say that, we don't need a policy to tell the staff that they can say, this is going to take a, a long time.
There again, if there's some issue that this board doesn't think that the staff needs to spend twenty-five hours on, at least we've got some leeway and a policy in place that prevents that from happening, and so I, I, I think we need to move forward with it. I think probably most counties already have this policy. We act as a board, as a five-member board, and let me say, we need to all figure out how to move this county forward. We need to all figure out how to get along and, and, and agree to disagree. There's going to be times that we debate hard, and we disagree, but we need to figure out how to move this county forward. I think we're all in favor of that, I, I think this is part of moving that, moving in that direction, and, and I, I support it wholly, that we need this policy, and, and on clarification, I don't, I don't know if the staff has any, any recommendation on that or, or what, but we, we need this policy.
I give you a couple of recommendations. One, ladies, second, and second, this is, every day, to you from Commissioner Bryant. I hope you enjoy your holiday weekend, when you return to the office, plenty of fun and important, I would appreciate any, any, any correspondence, reports, or any documentation of any nature whatsoever relating in any way to the Grove County Jail, Miss Manna, including records to the Florida Department of Health and Services, and any inspection from the time to, to the present town. These items may have been received by you, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Farmer, one or more county commissioners, the county attorney, or any one at the county. I appreciate your appropriate attention to this and other matters. And let, here's where, the board, I think, was finally vote, to, to quit talking about the jail or, or maybe jail at all, and this is going to take, this is, this is such a situation where one commissioner is, is ironed, this, you know, for commissioners that don't have a clue what's going on, and it's taking time, and then there's some of us, this is now the necessity, at seven thirty p.m., on August seventh, Don, this is the very best thing, the written part of my paper request, and this is the issue that was at tourist school in my office, and I don't really do any criticism in the city, but if I go through this, I'll, I'll answer your response to your email, that, that's asking for all the roads that were paved in Grove County the last ten years, and the specification of which one of those roads that was paved in Grove County for the last ten years, the project engineer of each one of those roads that was paved in Grove County for the last ten years, the certificate insurance for the contractor for all those roads that were paved in Grove County for the last ten years, the certificate insurance for the engineer for all of those roads that were paved in the last ten years, the, the budget, the budget license sheet, but also any subcontractor that had worked on any of those roads at least forty percent, or, or the project at least forty percent of time, and, and, and also the certificate insurance from that subcontractor, and all this we will not have, and then, uh, I'm keeping it passed forward, then any road in this county that had been paved twice in the last fifteen years, and, and the specification of each one of those roads, and the, the budget, uh, on each one of those roads, the budget license sheet, any contractor, uh, on those certificate insurance on those, certificate insurance on the subcontractor for those roads, I would, I would say, there's no way this could be done in a week's time, or couldn't be done in a week's time by one person, but some of us don't, it's, we have to create it, but here is, we are men of the man, we don't have, we, we really and truly, really and truly do not have time to do our regular work, and, and I understand, and Commissioner Madano is saying this, these nine county commissioners are all approved, that, that's not an issue, we're going to follow that, and that, that where I would be, as, as our regiment case, to, to work, whatever staff needs to get, board commissioner on those, the items, these items that the board has voted down, not to do, although the board is not aware of, and, and time can't, there's no way for a county commissioner to go talk to a second county commissioner and be like, if you can't talk to another commissioner, that means only you, you are the only one that knows what you're asking for, the other four have no clue what you're asking for, and so, and when one, the other four calls in, and we're working, we're working on projects, these projects, unless, I mean, the county commissioner doesn't know, nobody in the board, for the first of all, if nobody's willing, for the first of all, doesn't have a clue what we're working on. That, that would be my comment, just, just, I think it can work, like I always say, anything the county commissioner has approved, ever approved, that's, that's just where we're going, that's what we do every day. Commissioner Bryant comes in, Commissioner Jaeger comes in, Commissioner Madano, Commissioner Smaller, Mr. McCormore, I need your advice on this, 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 give me a copy of a maintenance agreement on the road, on the road at Howard's Creek, that's a standard business, but the, the things that the board is not aware of is what is in our top, we don't care, we are staff, we don't care, if you, you give us wild goose chases, and the board virtually wild goose chases, and we spend all our time, I didn't even spend my time with HCP, with the MAFS, I'm not a, not a fan of the MAFS, there's something we got to do, I'm, we must do, I am not being able to put any time on HCP, that deadline's coming up soon.
It is.
Enterprise zone, we've got access square mile to enterprise zone, I have not been able to work on enterprise zone, look, we're, we are chasing all of this, and, and so I, I agree with Commissioner Madano, so, I, I think what you're saying is, this need work, the board has not agreed to, or the board has already said not leave, then that's where it needs to go back from the board. And I do understand that, October twelve, two thousand and twelve, Commissioner Bryant was not here. Whether Commissioner Bryant agrees to it or does not agree to the limited maintenance agreement, and Mr. Conway's pitch, I think if the commissioner doesn't agree to it, it, the commissioner may bring that issue back from this county commissioner and tell him again, get a vote on it.
Absolutely, and, and that's what I want to prevent from happening, is us going backwards. I want to try to move this county forward, and I think this board wants to try to move this county forward, let's move forward. Uh, you know, this board is going to make mistakes just i- in, in decisions that we make. We're not going to make every decision right, just like previous boards have not made every decision right. Somehow we got to start moving the county forward, this is a step in the positive direction, I think that that's a, that's a good description of, of how the motion should go, is, is, if the boards made a decision on it, and look, that doesn't prevent the bo- board member from coming back and saying, look, I want this information, and, and get approval of the board to proceed forward, but, but what it does prevent is, is for somebody, some, some commissioner, that this board's already making a decision, like it, don't like it, I've lost a lot of votes up here, and somebody might even like to lose, and if I don't, I, it, but I have to accept them, I'm part of this board, I'm part of this five-member board, by myself, I have zero authority, and, and that's what we, that's what we're clarifying, it's, it's pretty simple, it's pretty easy, there's nobody trying to hide information at any point in time, a member of the public or a member of this commission can go to the clerk's office, we've got a policy on, on public records request, and make that request, if they're not, if they're not satisfied with what they get, they can, they can make a public records request, just like anybody from the public. We've got to be moving forward, guys, we've been moving backwards too for too long, let's move forward, and this is a policy that will help that-
Hold on, I would like to respond, Mr. Butler, as far as Mr. Conway's limited maintenance agreement, I'm not quite certain what your stand is. We discussed it in your office back last time, when, uh, around the time that Commissioner McLemore raised the issue, and we discussed it again recently by phone in the past week or so, and-
And, you know.
Yeah, that's correct, and I believe that every time we spoke about it, that I confirmed to you that we were in agreement, that if it served a public purpose to clear that drainage ditch that is on Mr. Conway's property, that we would keep that clear for purposes of drainage, and I've spoken with staff about that as well, and that that is to be clear if that provides drainage for that area and provides a public purpose, and we discussed that, and we were in agreement, so-
Discuss that.
When you made the issue that, I disagree with the limited maintenance agreement, I never said I disagreed with-
I guess I do, I say it's a very true.
And Mr. Conway keeps making it an issue.
In between our conversations, and then, when we got there, in between Jake not to get off to County Roadway, so that's the kind of, when you and I talked, you said, okay, that's reasonable, we'll do it, but a lot of times when I talk, you say, okay, that's reasonable, we'll do it, in between that, we told county staff not to do it.
No, my clarification, and I told you this on the phone, is that I've instructed them not to mow the banks of the ditch, it is Mr. Conway's property, and there are a lot of folks in this community that would like to have special treatment, and we can't do it for everyone, and I do not appreciate Mr. Conway taking, taking liberties with his position and showing his badge to get special favors, and I have instructed my work crews to do only what is, what they are supposed to do, and to check with Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Lewis could confirm that, I have said that to him as well, and it's the same throughout my district. We do not do work on private property unless it serves a public interest, and we have an agreement for that work to be done. I have confirmed that with you on the phone, I'm not going to go through this again.
Well, and, and I hear what you're saying, but also, you know, you hear what I'm saying, Jake told me, and Jake did not tell me at all, Jake told me not to go to the roadway, I talked to Stacy, I talked to your work crew, Stacy could not give me to clean that ditch, I wound up later that day, because you called me, Liz did call me because, called me to call you, and you said, will you please call Conway on my behalf? Got it, I mean, that's what, my day, it's my lap, that kind of thing, and so, so I get to call Mr. Conway, and so find out what's going on, he wouldn't know, he said, they're doing a knee, he said, the way of my flow and all is running, is, is running through pretty, pretty heavy, and it looks like it's going to run to the roadway, which is a power roadway, and, and I said, should we do it, and you, you agree, okay, that's reasonable. The first time you and I talked about it, it was reasonable, in between that, and Jake said you shouldn't not do it, also Stacy said you shouldn't not do it, maybe Stacy got it from Jake, but those two kind of parties said, we should not do it, and that's something that we're only acting on to do, and limited maintenance agreement to drain, the public purposes of drain that passed around between Conway, Conway's and High Ground, related to, to the other ground, nothing's high out there, it looks hot, and if you look at, my dog mouth, she is high, and the bridge family is not high, and if you don't drain it, that pasture sits in water and breathes in streets, and that's, that's the reason for it, it's not for Conway, it's for, for the famous.
I, I can bring you pages of people in District Three that have water on their property, that have drainage issues, and we need to treat everyone equally, and if, if Mr. Lewis would like to come up and clarify, he's welcome to, but I am confident that in our conversations, that it was that that drainage district, that drainage ditch can be cleared for the purposes of drainage, not to beautify it, not to mow the banks of it, not to fix Mr. Conway's yard, and I'm not going to argue with you, I-
I'm not saying that.
I told you one thing, and talked to other staff, and said another. The other issue is on the roads, and, and you're citing to this older email about the roads, and I, after you said, this was a, a voluminous activity, I asked you to hold off, we talked about it, I have not come back and asked you for that information again. I said, why don't, I asked you to wait till we could sit down and talk about it, that's done. As far as the jail goes, this, this board can take any vote that they want, let me just finish my thought, I'm on this side.
Before we go to the jail, we got a motion on the floor over here.
And a sec.
And a sec, and we don't, we don't got clean, completely away from the motion, the topic of the motion.
This is about that issue, this is about that issue, just because this board takes a vote, it doesn't mean that we are not still violating Florida law, and I have a responsibility, and we have-
Well, we've got a, we've got a county attorney over here that advises us, and, and you always talk about liability, you're the, you're the cause of, of liability issues, we've got a county attorney here, it's not you, you sit here as a commissioner, one of five, and we've got a county attorney that has advised us that we're proceeding in the right direction. I'm going with my county attorney, so when you make liable statements, you liable the whole county.
I'm not making a liable statement.
I'm just saying, we, we go along, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I trust this guy.
Not a liable statement, when you throw legal terms around, you need to know what they mean.
We got a motion on the floor by Mr. Mike Daniels, Mr. Mike Daniels, could you explain your motion?
Yes, to the clerk. Uh, motion is this, any request to the staff outside of normal procedure must be brought before the board for approval.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just some clarity on the motion, outside of normal course of business, there has to be someone that determines that, makes that ultimate determination, so if you have two weeks before you, during your meetings, is it the administrator who makes those decisions before it comes back on the second and fourth Tuesday? So that would be part of that motion, I would, you want me to implement that in there?
Absolutely, I'll include that.
Administrator?
I got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, I got a second by Mr. Jaeger, do I have any opposed?
I'm certainly opposed.
I got one opposed, motion carries four and one.
Caught government at its finest.
I'd call it, I'd, I'd call it the way that the United States of America works, and that's, that's, that's the way that, that the federal government works, the state government works, and local government works, this is not preventing anybody from requesting any specific information on anything, this is to, this is talking about the staff and the way that we should work and we should move forward.
Mr. Mike Daniels, do you have anything else?
Uh, let me see here. Chairman, I think that's pretty much right, that's for me, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, come in, I want to ask you. The back end, we've seen every county commissioner for the last twenty-five years, and you are not by a rule, county commissioner, that we tell you that I cannot be a burden, send due brings for them, and never, never, in my tenure with this board, have I seen where I could not work with a commissioner. I understand, that motion was, it's going to be my discretion, and, and I guarantee you, unless somebody just makes something up and spams it out out of control, it would enable that from the board that Don is not doing what I want done, because I know how to heal it, I know how to heal it, and I wish I knew how to heal it, so it's not an issue, it's going to die in discretion, that means I don't, we don't have to do it. If, if this, if this is a judgment, I'm going to do it, if it's not a judgment, this board will have to make, make decisions on it.
Um, it's my turn now, good God, mercy. Uh, I just want to, uh, bring out about the food pantry at the Washington Recreation, or at the Wig Center, you know, we've been having trouble getting in donations, so if there's anyone out there who can help out with the wig, uh, the Washington Recreation or Food Bank at the Wig Center, uh, Ms. Tamlin Smith is over the food bank, working with the workforce board, um, and I just want to make, put that out to any constituents who happen to be looking at us from TV or sending the audience, you know, if you would like to help out our food bank, we, we appreciate everything that you can do. Um, Doc?
Mr. McCormore might be able to assist you.
Yes, we got, we got him on, we got him on the call list.
Offered at last board meeting, I've received no phone calls.
We have, we have called your name many times, you will be getting a phone call.
Oh, it just got to that off? I know, I've been up there before.
Uh, um, uh, I have spoke with Mr. Butler over at the Recreation Center, we have just about ten, fifteen gallons of paint to finish up. The whole facility have been, uh, is, is, uh, been painted, everything out there looks beautiful, uh, uh, um, so I'm asking the board if, uh, you can give Mr. Butler authorizations to look and see can we come up with about ten or fifteen gallons of paint to finish up that project, and we will be through with that.
Get that done.
I got a motion by Mr. uh, Mike Daniels, second by Mr. Jaeger, do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries five and oh. Um, guys, I just spoke on this here earlier, went to lots of those seminars and, uh, different events that they send us to down south in Tallahassee, I went across a lot of commissioners. Tallahassee, I run across a lot of commissioners. A lot of commissioners ask me once they find out how we operate, they ask me, how do you guys operate with just one attorney? You know, everybody, like I told them, all the commissioners got the same office sitting right over there. You know, he's, how do you guys operate like that? They come from us working together. We got to work together. And we got to respect each other. Now, that respect goes a long ways. You don't want no respect, don't show respect, you won't get it. Want respect, show respect. There's many times I have walked in that office and had something on my mind that I wanted to do. This Linnell, Mr. Butler, was heavily into something that another commissioner had on the table. I respectfully just told Mr. Butler, I get back with you. Because he's only one man. We throw everything on the back of this man. You know, they says, his, his truck is full, he had to hook a trailer to his truck. Because we putting just that much on his bike. But I got to give you credit, Mr. Butler. You do a very good job. You got a great staff that work with you. So guys, if, 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 if we can respect each other enough to know that we all going in our different directions. When I was elected, I had certain things that I wanted to look into. Same thing with Mr. Mike Daniels, same thing with Ms. Bryan. What I'm saying is, guys, we got to work together to make our county go forward. I didn't join this board to go backwards. I joined this board to help go forward. Just like Mr. Yeager said, we had a lot of commissioners before us. I don't know if those guys knew they was making mistakes when they made them, but they human, they made mistakes. And we got a problem with the ditch out there on the beach, let's figure out how we can fix the problem. Instead of going back six years beating up on each other. The problem need to be fixed, we got no, no matter what we do here, we still got to fix it, if it need to be fixed. So let's put our heads together. One thing I can truly say, we all put our heads together, there's no problem yet that came before this board, when we put our heads together that we didn't solve. So if that problem out there on that, uh, beach is that critical, we need to start putting our heads together so we can resolve that problem. Guys, I mean, I, I'm telling you, we don't have the budget that a bunch of these other cities got, but when it comes down to it, we can stand up within the, any of them. We got the best of staff. I think we got the best of commissioners. You know? I really feel like we got, uh, TDC director have really just put Gulf County on the map. Things is going in the right direction. We just got to work with it and continue to make it work for the best for everybody. So, do I have anything else from the public?
She, she's the people. I don't know mouth.
Yes, sir, Mr. Now, can you give your name and your address to the?
Ralph Rish, twenty-five oh one Constitution Drive, Port St. Joe. Let's get my glasses out because I can't see anymore. Um, I apologize in advance for bringing this back up again, but I wanted to address a few of the things that were said at the last few meetings by Mr. Corran concerning America's ditch. And so I know y'all have already hashed out a bunch today, and I didn't expect that. That's why I waited to the, to the end of the meeting, so I apologize. But, um, you know, over the last year or two, it seems like there's two or three people. There's sixteen thousand people in this community, in this, in this county. I've been here fifty-three years, my family's been here a hundred years, just like yours, Mr. MacDaniel. And, uh, over the last two or three years, and I don't come to meetings, but I occasionally listen on TV to the meetings, and over the last two or three years, there's two or three people, not sixteen thousand, not even a hundred, not, but two or three people that address this board, uh, quite often. And, um, sometimes, you know, there's inaccurate information that's given to the board, sometimes they lead people in one way, and most every time I notice it's hardly ever addressed. I mean, and it, or it's ever, uh, a rebuttal or anything offered to it. And so the people that watch on TV and the people that sit at the crowd, they just take it at face value, what they hear. Normally, it's printed in the paper the next week without anybody looking into it to see if it's true or not true. And so I wanted to address about five or six things that came up in the meeting, um, last week. Some of them are trivial, and, um, and some of them are not. But the bottom line is they're falsehoods. And so it's easy to step up to here at this board and come out by yourself and not bring anything, and it's another thing to bring all the documents with you. And so when people come before the board and they're going to make statements before the board that the public's going to hear out here and on that TV, you know they need to have their, their facts right and the truth, uh, armed with the truth. And so I don't come before the board very often, but when I do, I'll be armed with the truth, in case you want to see it. And so, uh, last week, Mr. Corran made a statement concerning the contract amount. It's kind of trivial, it doesn't really, really matter a whole lot, but he said this was a one point two million dollar construction project. Truth is, it's six hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cent to buy the pipe. Three hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for the contractor to put the pipe in the ground for a total of nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-two cent. Now, I mean, that's the information I've been able to gather. And like I said, that doesn't mean a whole lot, except for when you come up here and tell the people it's a million two and it's nine hundred and something, that's not true. Mr. Corran also said that the total repairs by the county was a quarter of a million dollars. That's what he put on TV, that's what he put out for the people behind us. Five minutes later, Ms. uh, Bryan said that it was thirty-seven thousand dollars. So where is the truth lie? And the truth was, and somebody pointed it out early, and I don't remember who it was, I didn't expect somebody would say anything about it before I got up here, but the truth is, is, in my guess, best guess, and it is a guess, that it's probably twenty thousand dollars or less. Because the, the, the figure that Mr. Bryan gave, which is certainly closer to being accurate than the one that Mr. Corran gave, it a quarter of a million dollars, that's what he told the public. It, it's a lie. I mean, just a pure lie, when you say a quarter of a million dollars, uh, honestly, should the county had to put any money in it? No. I mean, they shouldn't. Shouldn't have to put any money in it, and still shouldn't, and I know they're still dealing with it. But the bottom line is, even on a thirty-seven thousand dollar figure that was brought up before the board, it was based on a FEMA rate. And I'll give you an idea what that, that is. If you've got a tractor that's setting out on the site for eight hours, and they decide to charge eight hours against it, if it took zero gas for that, that eight hours because it's set there, or it took nobody working on it or whatever, the FEMA allows you a certain rate if you had, you know, a storm or something here. So it's a common practice by county or by city to look at that FEMA rate. So if FEMA allowed two hundred dollars an hour, even if the tractor wasn't being used, then it's two hundred dollars an hour. And I, and I don't know what the FEMA rate is for a tractor or for the employees. But the bottom line is, is that, um, you know, those, those numbers are not accurate as to what the county actually put into the project, and I wanted to point that out. Mr. Corran also said that engineering inspection, uh, engineering and the inspection of a project by the same firm, he almost said it was illegal. He didn't quite get to, to the point of saying it illegal. I listened to the tape. Uh, he certainly said it was wrong. He certainly said that the, uh, it was a fox garden, the hen house. What I want to tell you is, is that our firm, uh, works for over sixty different governments, uh, state, some puddle, um, a lot of cities and counties around Alabama and in Florida, all over Florida. Um, and with every single one of our city and county governments, we do the engineering and we do the inspection for them. It's not against the law. And that's just not the truth, and it's inaccurate statement that he made before the board. Uh, in fact, the DOT hands out about twenty-five million dollars a year, and this is a state agency, uh, to the cities and the counties, uh, for SCRAF and SCOT, and you're all very familiar with those, those programs. I think this year they're handing out fifty million dollars in SCRAF and SCOT. And the DOT allows the local engineers to do the design and inspection. So to stand before the board and tell all the people that's listening on TV, and tell the people in, in the audience here that, that that's wrong and it's improper, uh, is just not true, happens every single day in the state of Florida, um, and I wanted to make sure you knew that. One thing Mr. Corran questioned was the inspection and the oversight of the contract. And he was right, probably Rish did oversee, oversee the, uh, the, uh, engineering and the inspection of the contract. Um, our firm approached the county staff about the fees for the oversight. Um, I'm going to tell you, you have the best negotiator, I heard you a while ago talking about negotiating contracts, there's no better negotiator than this county, in this county, than Mr. Juan over there. I'm telling you, you're talking about somebody that'll beat you up over some fees. I mean, she's, she's good at it. But over the last few years, our firm has conflicted, uh, on three different occasions that I can remember. It was one time with the city and two times with the county. In other words, we, we conflicted out and we were not able to do the, the work for you. So you had to advertise for engineers and you had to hire some other folks and, uh, to do full-time inspection. And, um, uh, have the contracts with me. Um, both of those firms were negotiated down, they started at fifteen percent, if I'm not mistaken, Juan could answer that. And she negotiated, negotiated them down to eight percent or so range to do full-time inspection. Our fee to do a part-time inspection was two point five percent, uh, on this ten million dollar road mine. The recent, the recent, uh, project that went before the city of St. Joe, uh, where we conflicted on was for a bike path inspection, not roads and not critical thing, a bike path. And the city manager, the former city manager, called the DOT, and he asked the DOT, was fifteen percent to do that inspection at a reasonable rate. And the Florida Department of Transportation, according to what Mr. Weston told me, told, uh, he was told by then that fifteen percent was a reasonable rate. Now, when we approached the staff about this years ago, we told the staff that we needed to do a part-time two point five percent inspection on this project. Had you paid fifteen percent on ten million dollars, a million five would have went to the engineering that didn't go onto the roads. I mean, we made the recommendation to them of what to, what to do on this project. Part of this road mine money was spent on this America's ditch. You know, and there are some problems out there, I'll be the first one. Now, that is one thing I will agree on, on Mr., with Mr. Corran on. Uh, there are some issues out there with that ditch still today. And I mean, and, you know, if, if anything we need to do to help you address it, we'll be glad to, to, to do whatever. But, uh, we spent two to three to four hours on that project a day, uh, not full-time, because we were overlooking at roads and we were all inspecting them, inspecting ones in, um, all, all over the county at the same time. We had two or three people doing it, but it's, at certain times, they had five, six, seven crews out running and doing different things. And so if you want to guarantee that every single project is done absolutely perfect, then the best thing to do is hire full-time inspection. But I, and it'd be nice money for us, but I tell you, it isn't what you want to do. You got a thirty-five dollar problem out there or a twenty thousand dollar project, but if you just take that average between the three projects that are done, that's eleven, twelve percent that could have been paid on inspection, which would have cost you eight or nine hundred thousand additional dollars. So you got a twenty thousand dollar problem out there that you saved nine hundred thousand by not paying your engineers to go do inspection. And all of that money went on roads somewhere, went on asphalt, went on things that the citizens of this community want. Because I can tell you, I know they don't want to pay money to sell the plans that you're going to set on the shelf just as soon as you get through with the project, or they, for a guy, or to pay us just to go out there and set on the project all day. They want to see asphalt, and they want to see lime rock, and they want to see pipes. And so that's what we tried to accomplish, and I just wanted to make sure that, um, that everybody knew that. Also, and I think that somebody pointed this out, it might have been Mr. Bailey earlier, that the contract was for a, a four-month period. And I tell you, you talking about, and, and by the way, I, I'd taken about a, uh, eight year, um, off, off work at the time, and it just came back when this project was just being completed. But I did go out there and look at it a couple times. That's the most difficult project I've ever seen. I mean, the water table was terrible out there, there was a lot of gas lines, and somebody mentioned that the gas lines and power lines are on every project, and not on every project. They are on some projects, but they're not on every project. But that one was an area that was very difficult to permit, and there was a lot of questions about the design of the, of the project. The project was designed by a professional engineer, a PE. It was, uh, very well vetted by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, very well vetted by the Corps of Engineers, and permits were issued on the, on the project based on the design of the project. So, um, I think that's about all. I do know that he said, uh, that, also my friend Warren Yeager was on the board at the time, which, I mean, that's here and there, but he was not on the board at the time. But if you go out there and you listen to that TV, you think, oh, well, he was on the board at the time too, you know? And so if you go and look at, at, I pointed out about six or seven things right there, and, and I'm not beating on Mr. Corran, I'm beating on people that get up here and tell the board something that's just not true, and they have nothing to back it up with, they just want to get up here and talk about it because they're trying to stir up trouble in our community. And don't let them come up there under the auspices, or I say, don't let them come, let them come, or believe that every single thing that you, that, that they come up here and say is true. And if they do, I mean, you know, what you might want to do is ask them to prove it, you know, and to bring the, bring the proof on the things they said. But it's very easy to go check and see that the county didn't spend one quarter of a million dollars that was represented up here to the people, um, that was spent, and these other items that I pointed out to you today. It's all in the public record, every bit of it. So anyway, I just want to tell you on behalf of our firm, we've been working for this board for, uh, twenty-something years, I think. Uh, we went into business in nineteen ninety-one, our first year in business, we got three city and county contracts, those same three people we're working for today. A year later, we got three more, including this board, the same ones we're still working for today. And in twenty-two years of, of business, our business has grown to over, uh, sixty continuing contract clients, just like you are. And only one time in twenty-two years have we not been re-selected, uh, if the, if the board went it back out for engineering services. And most all those boards have never went back out for engineering service because they're satisfied with our work. But if we ever do anything that, that is not, uh, prudent, or that this board thinks that, that our company has not done, uh, in a, in a good manner or a perfect manner for this board, I mean, we'll stand here and correct it or do whatever we need to do. I just don't think this is one of those cases. But, uh, if the board thinks different, I promise you, we'll step up to the plate and do whatever you want us to do.
Very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rish.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment? Um, I, I know Mr. Rish, he did a disclaimer on his number and, um, given the information he had, but it, it was over a little mi- over a million dollars. But he said he wasn't privileged to all the information. There were some direct purchases that he probably is not aware of, and that has provided to Mr.
Do we have anything else on the board?
I promise, Mr. Chairman, Christie McElroy, thirteen eleven Woodward Avenue, Port St. Joe. I'm not trying to get to the point of diminishing returns, but I've been carrying this for the last couple of meetings. And before time gets away from us and we're six years down the road, I do have a couple of questions because it has come up recently in these board meetings. Uh, specifically, the event that took place at the TDC building several months ago, that was brought up at this county commission, uh, meeting. And I'm entering into the record a couple of items. One is from the STAR report, April four, uh, two thousand and thirteen, and the other one is from the county notes. And again, I, I think it's important that we understand how our TDC building is being used. In the STAR, um, there was to be a Republican biannual concealed weapons course in Port St. Joe on April the twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. It was to be held at Capital City Bank in Port St. Joe. To register, participants needed to contact Mr. Tom Sims. The fee per participant was seventy-five dollars. Uh, the rest is what I would like us all to understand because many of the people are in the room. Um, my understanding is as follows. Capital City Bank didn't allow the concealed weapons course to be held at that location. This meant that the Republican Party had to find another location. Somehow, Gail Alsobrook became involved. Gail Alsobrook requested that the TDC county building be used, uh, for this event, and the request went to Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins told Gail Alsobrook that it was a county building and the request would need to go through the proper channel and to this board. Gail Alsobrook said, oh, never mind, we'll find another solution. Gail Alsobrook, at a later timeframe, went to TDC staff member, Ms. Crystal, and stated that it was go, all right to go ahead with this course. Hence, the Republican Party biannual concealed weapons course was held at the TDC building. And again, it was called the, the Republican Party Biannual Concealed Weapons Class in And again, it was called the, the Republican Party bi-annual concealed weapons class in the paper. So fast forward, there was no protocol correctly followed to utilize this county building. So what I'd like to understand is the following. Who attended?